Welcome West Orange to our October 6, 2020 Township Council Virtual Meeting. I'm Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So tonight, we want to celebrate a journey of one of our future Eagle Scouts here in the township, Mr. Sean Cox, and we welcome him this evening. He has been working diligently on a project that our council colleague Susan McCartney has been assisting him with. And before we introduce Sean and I turn it over to my colleague, I just want to talk a little bit about the commendation. I'll let Councilwoman explain the project a little bit further. So we're going to commendate Sean from Boy Scout Troop 6. And our commendation starts with Sean Cox has began his journey with Troop 6 in September 2016 and worked his way through the ranks of scout, tenderfoot, second class, first class, star, and life scout, completed the intensive national youth leadership training program, and was elected a member of the Order of the Arrow Scattings Honor Society. He has earned 34 merit badges, including all 13 required for the Eagle rank, and has also received the National Outdoor Award for Outstanding Achievement in Hiking and Camping. Well done, very well done. Sean Jr., West Orange High School, participating in the marching band while beginning his college research process, potentially interested in studying engineering, outdoor education, or public service. His main interests are outdoor action sports, particularly backpacking, camping, mountain biking, and canoeing, as well as automotive. Beyond his own Eagle Scout project, Sean has volunteered on several community service projects here in West Orange. And I'm going to let Councilwoman talk about his project. And I just want to end with Sean's goals for the rest of his scouting career, other than successfully completing his board review to reach Eagle rank or to continue accelerating his training with his fellow senior scouts in backpacking to prepare for a long trek in the Philmont Scout Ranch in New Mexico next summer, as well as teaching the junior scouts the finer points of bushcraft, wilderness survival, and winter camping. So let it therefore be resolved that the West Orange Township Council does hereby recognize Sean Cox as his astounding achievement and extends best wishes in successfully attaining his Eagle rank. So congratulations, Sean, moving forward with this impressive endeavor that you have been diligently working on and such a great asset to the community with your project. So Councilwoman, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. So Council President, if you recall, last spring, the West Orange Environmental Commission submitted a $10,000, we were awarded a $10,000 grant from New Jersey American Water, and it was brought to our attention by the Assistant Director, Nick Celeste, from the Department of Public Works, and our forester, John Linsen, because there are many parts of the west branch of the Rollway River, which runs from Vincent's Pond in Degnan Park to the Orange Reservoir. People along that path experienced flooding because of the debris and blockages that are along that watershed. I had mentioned that at one of the farmers' markets Saturday mornings to the troop that was there, and Sean just thought it was a great idea and asked if he could help somehow. Though it was a partnership with the township, he took it over, organized his volunteers through grants with the town. We were able to get, as you can see in the pictures, we have Bobby DeMayo there was our inspector, Dean, and AJ from the Department of Public Works. I believe Sean picked, we picked up 63 bags of trash in the stream. There are a few of his volunteer, a lot of volunteers there getting down and dirty. It was a beautiful day, but it would help with the flooding, like I said, as the residents along that path and just cleaning up the debris for the wildlife. The township, I don't know that there's an inventory picture there, but the grabbers and trash grabbers and garbage bags and gloves and a lot of the supplies were provided through the grants, either New Jersey Clean Communities and this New Jersey American Water Grant. So Sean can talk more about, we collaborated on it, and you could see through the pictures how everyone did work together, but Sean ended up taking the reins and spearheading the volunteers and the project itself and the education component along the way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who helped with the project. I really wanted to have, I really wanted to clean the river because there was so much trash and debris collecting that would eventually run straight down into the reservoir. On a walk with my dad down by the reservoir, the yellow berm that was placed there by the county just had tons and tons of trash and garbage sitting there for everybody to see and just collecting there. So I wanted to do river cleanup and clean up all that garbage, but also put in berms like that to have a long-lasting effect and try to catch the garbage before it reaches the reservoir.
So Sean, let me ask you, what was the most, oh, sorry, Councilwoman. Sean, what was the most interesting item that you found litter-wise in the river? Were there some surprises that people, what they do and what they dump?
There's definitely a lot of surprises for items found on the river. One of my groups said they found a four-foot-tall wooden garden gnome. The other groups found lawn mowers and grills and traffic signs and hand trucks, shopping carts. My dad found like 27 bottles of the same wine in a pile right behind someone's house.
Wasn't me.
And yeah, there's just tons of large debris, like wooded and metal and stuff like that, and there's car batteries and yeah, tons of nasty stuff that should not be in the river.
Yeah.
I gave Sean, I pulled out what I thought was a branch. It turned out to be deer antlers, so Sean has that as a souvenir of the project.
Good for you. Well, Sean, we can't thank you enough. So important, and it's amazing how people just litter, you know, actually, they made the river a dumpster. You know, we have a recycling center that takes most of those items. We have bulk garbage day that, you know, people could just put it as, it's easier to put it to their curb than it is to place it there. So it's amazing of what you had seen.
I definitely noticed while doing my project, there was a couple spots which were obviously dumping grounds for people. And that was definitely like the most amount of garbage were in those spots, like behind Metropolitan and stuff like that.
Oh, wow. Maybe we'll have to talk, you know, talk to the police chief and maybe put a camera somewhere. But that's a shame, that really is a shame. So I can only imagine maybe somebody from out of town, because we do have a great bulk garbage day. So, but thank you so much.
Thank you to all the volunteers who assisted with my project. And yeah, just thank you for everyone who participated in the cleanup. I really appreciate it.
We appreciate your efforts, and I'll let my other colleagues add to the conversation. Councilman Guarino? He must be muted.
Thanks, Lauren muted me. Sean, you should be very proud of yourself of what you've accomplished. You're a prime example of what makes West Orange the great township it is, and it's something you'll carry with you the rest of your life, and you're going to send an example for many future Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts along the way. And the township is very proud of you. And, you know, we need more youth of West Orange to do what you do, to get your hands dirty, get down and get into it and clean up our environment, because it's all up to you. It's us, it's our problem, and we need to fix it. And you started the ball rolling, and I just want to congratulate you and wish you continued success in your life, both professionally and personally. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Krokoviac?
I agree. Thank you very much for this project to serve your community. This is, this was a great project, a wonderful addition to our environment, and your Eagle achievement is just amazing, and best wishes for the future. You've gotten a real good start in life, keep going.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Hi, Sean. Congrats on your endeavors and your ability to organize, recruit, and execute your vision. That's pretty powerful stuff for young people. I'm really happy to hear you share. Incredibly disappointed at the things that you were surprised at seeing. I can't believe that that's what we do. I have to say, wow, you know, we have bulk collection every Friday. People put your trash in the bulk, please. But that's very hopeful for us as adults leaving to young people who are concerned about our environment, people like yourself, to make sure that we are protecting our rivers and our wildlife and our communities. So thank you for that. That's pretty amazing that a walk made you realize that that was necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman McCartney, if you have any final words for Sean?
Yeah, just, so Sean has turned out to be a role model for his troop, and I know there are others that are following his path. And I would like you to keep in contact with us and the Environmental Commission. I know we've had this discussion where there are a lot more things that you or your troop can help us achieve, and they can move on to their Eagle Scout. So best wishes with your review. And hope to see you again soon.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Sean. Again, I have to ditto my colleagues' comments. I, you know, your troop is so impressive every time I go to an Eagle Scout award, just the projects that you all think of and how important they are to our community. I look forward to seeing you at your ceremony this year, so keep up the good work. And, and thank you for coming on this evening and sharing your message, because hopefully by what you shared with us this evening, many people in the audience will listen and realize and be more mindful before they misplace their waste here in the township.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. And Lauren will let you leave the call.
Yeah, I'm just going to convert you back to an attendee, and then you can stay if you'd like or leave as you'd like.
Council President, on that note, also, if anyone drives by the library, I understand there was another troop from Clifton that did a beautification project in front of the West Orange Library with planters and benches, and it really looks very nice.
Oh, wow. That was nice of them to visit here from Clifton.
Well, scouts were, a few of the scouts were here in West Orange.
Okay, good. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Mr. Sayers and an update on redevelopment.
Fortunately, I do not have one. I tried to get ahold of Mr. Diaz today. I called him two or three different times, and his phone went to voicemail. So my guess is he's probably out of the country. So I didn't get any information from him, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, that was disappointing. Maybe we could, maybe we could send him a correspondence by email or mail, because we need to hear something at the next meeting about these two.
I'll make sure I get something from him. But I'll call him probably even tomorrow again, just to get an update. But unfortunately, he never, he never got back to me today, which when he usually, he'll get back, he always gets back to me unless he's out of the country. So he's probably out of the country, I would think.
What about his partners? Is partner ever responsive or?
I always talk to Gene. I don't talk to the other guy, to be honest with you. I don't really know the guy.
Yeah, if we could get something back before, because residents have been asking before the next meeting, if he does return your call or your email, please forward the response to us, please.
I will get something for the next meeting, definitely.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Mr. Sayers?
No, just one, just one question, Council President?
Sure.
Mr. Sayers, can you just rectify, how many of the units are rented at this time?
Um, you know what? I don't have my file in front of me, the ones that he gave me last month, but.
In my notes, I have 230.
Yeah. That was from last week, right?
Right.
The last meeting. So as of the last meeting, 230 were fully rented.
Okay. I just want to guess the number I've had. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. That's, I just wanted to make sure my number is correct. Okay.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Sayers? Okay. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to council liaison reports. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Of course, like everybody knows, the farmer's market's coming to, our season's coming to a close on October 31st. And, you know, please get out there, there's some great stuff still left out there, some great vendors, and, you know, sorry that we're ending it early this year. Hopefully COVID will be in the betterest place, and maybe not here in West Orange, and we'll be able to do the things that really make the farmer's market the farmer's market. And big thanks to, you know, to Stacy and Rob Reese for a great job in keeping it going and the efforts. And so please come on out, October 31st is the last Saturday for our farmer's market, and we look forward to seeing you there. Also, if people are driving up and down Main Street, you will see the fantastic veteran banners up and down Main Street honoring West Orange heroes and West Orange residents who were served in the armed forces in the wars that kept freedom for us alive. And it's a great project, and there's still, I think there's still banners available. You can reach out to Towntown West Orange Alliance and also to Town Historian Joe Fagan, and it's phenomenal when you drive down and even walk down certain areas to see those banners flying high on our poles and, you know, depicting, you know, the heroes of West Orange. Also, this coming on October 14th will be the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board Meeting. Thanks to the hospitality of Superintendent Tom Ross, the meeting will be held at the Thomas Edison National Park. And so we look forward to, it'll be at 7:30 October 14th at Thomas Edison National Park. Come and share your opinions and your points, and you can view some of the documents and things that we're working on, and we're looking forward to seeing you there. Let's see. And that's about it for me, Council President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Krokoviac? Is he there?
Yes, nothing for me.
Okay, so I can't, I can't see everybody, so. Okay, Councilwoman Metu Brown, I apologize, I don't have any slides this evening. Councilwoman Metu Brown?
That's okay, none for me.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Oh, so the West Orange Arts Council, I'll start with that. They have a call for artists for the Hispanic Heritage Month. They are planning partnering with Bloomfield. The art gallery manager, Ray Arbello, has an exhibit. And just look forward to featuring this perspective. Let's see. I really would just encourage everyone to go to warts.org. There are workshops and other exhibits. There's so much information there. We did apply for a grant, and that was awarded just the other day, New Jersey Foundation for Community. It was for COVID-related programming or lack thereof programming. So that will be helpful. The planning board meets tomorrow night, it's tomorrow night, meaning October 7th at 7:30. We are going to review the tree ordinance and the other Chapter 25 land use ordinance on the inclusionary housing ordinance came before us, and we sent it back to review for the planning board. Let's see, open space, Joe, I'm going to take that. Open Space is also meeting tomorrow behind the library. Couple things on that agenda at 7 o'clock. Bring lawn chair, because they're sitting outdoors. And AusPAC, wonderful. Cindy, I don't know if you want to pick up on that, but AusPAC had their comedy, Motown, the week prior, comedy show last Friday, and I understand the Beatles are coming to town this weekend. So it's just outstanding performances at AusPAC. So please, let's visit Pleasant Valley Productions for these types of events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I'll pick up on that. The Beatles is Saturday night at 6:30 PM. Bring your lawn chair and blanket. The shows have been amazing. There's been very huge amounts, a large amount of people coming out, but very socially distant, very safe, great feedback. They're really doing a great job, Pleasant Valley Productions, and also partnering last week with the Recreation Department with the comedy show. So just great community activities in these times of 2020. So we're learning how to do things differently and safely. Speaking of that, we have a few events coming out for our seniors initiative program. If you get a chance, our senior coordinators have worked together, and you'll see our banners out for promotion for Aging Well, West Orange, our senior initiative, livability's initiative, that we were recognized by AARP. A lot of great programming, a lot of great resources. The past couple weeks, we've been on, I made it to two meetings. Unfortunately, I have the full-time job during the day, but two sessions of the Grotta, which gives out large grants, had invited us in this year. Great information, work sessions with other states, other communities, learning a lot. And if you go to our senior website, you'll see that there's creativity blooms, three-session art classes via Zoom. Or also, if you want to learn how to Zoom, please reach out to Laura Van Dyke at 973-325-4105. There, we have something out on, I believe, TV 36 and 45. So if you do have a laptop, you're going to get a laptop. We want to work with you with technology. We want you to get up and Zoom and participate in a lot of these new classes. The library has loads of classes, and also just to connect with friends. So we're hoping folks take us up on that offer and learn how to Zoom. Very, very easy to follow along. There's also a seasonal celebration concert series via Zoom, multiple dates, and also October is Mental Health Month. And so there's a health series on Wednesday, October 7th, from 12 to 1. So all great classes, you know, our senior department is doing well, plus all the aerobics classes they still have, so please go on to their website and get caught up. Football started in the township. The high school had a scrimmage, and they played St. Peter's Prep. Again, all socially distanced, they worked the snack bar, doing a great job up there, keeping everyone safe. And our PAL program has kicked in and started, and they had an opening season this weekend. So again, practicing protocols, trying to keep everyone safe and also try to give these great activities to our youth. And we have Mr. Johnson from our Recreation Department. I don't know if you want to take two seconds to talk about our October activities, being that we have you on the call tonight?
Sure.
We have a lot of great stuff coming up in October. Our Recreation Department's been very busy.
Yeah, we're doing the best we can, we're trying to provide a positive Halloween with all this social distancing stuff. So on Friday, October 30th, we're going to have our traditional costume contest that we've always had in West Orange tradition, at 6 o'clock at the Degnan Tennis Courts. We're going there that week, because we have a little more control over it, to do social distancing and still give the kids opportunity to show off all the great costumes in town. And then after that, we're going to show Hotel Transylvania 2 on the Degnan baseball fields, or whatever, costume contest, and then we're going to follow that up with an outdoor movie on the field for everybody to come and enjoy and have a nice night out. And we're going to give away some goodie bags throughout the night to everybody. So a great opportunity to celebrate Halloween. And then also, throughout the month of October, we're doing a virtual pumpkin carving contest. So people at home with their families, they can create their own Halloween pumpkin, enter the contest, and then we'll post it and have a public voting session to determine some winners. And then also, as part of that contest, we're going to give away a half-price pool membership for 2021, which everybody that enters is going to be eligible for that. So that'll be a random draw for that prize. So that's something new this year, where we're looking forward to seeing all the great pumpkins that are in the township.
And just one more event, our virtual Barktober Halloween Dog Parade. We have to go virtual this year with our pups. I want to thank Laura Lab for organizing that. And that's a $10 entry fee that you could find on our westorange.org/reck website.
Yeah, that'd be the same kind of format, where they enter online, and we'll post all the entries for that and the public can vote on that through the website as well for all the Barktober.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You guys are doing a great job this summer with all the outdoor movies that you provided the community and just the out-of-the-box thinking on how to keep everybody safe and entertained. I know it has not been easy, but we really thank you for it. I know a lot of the families in the township do as well, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, what?
Nine words.
Oh, hi, Mr. Key, I didn't realize you were on the call. Thank you, thank you. Well, you guys have been doing a phenomenal job, we appreciate it. You guys have been working hard, so thank you, and ladies in your department. With that, we will move to our general meeting, our public meeting. Madam Clerk?
Oh, Madam Clerk, you are muted.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Okay, great, thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I call up members of the public to speak for five minutes, I just want to, I know there was some angst among the community the past couple days, because we received a lot of emails in regards to Crestmont Country Club. There was potential talk of some form of development on their property, about 90 acres that they own, and they were going to have talks with the, actually, there was something scheduled this evening that was canceled. So I just want to read a statement that the mayor had posted to the Facebook, so in case there's anyone on the call this evening, I just wanted to give them this update. So the mayor had posted today, the township had asked Crestmont Country Club to postpone the meeting scheduled, which would have been tonight, and they have agreed. This will provide time for the council to engage in meaningful discussion about the future of the 90-acre parcel and to do more, fully explore their plans for the property. The many questions that have been raised are the possibility of preservation. The many questions that have been raised are the possibility of preservation. So there will be, you know, there is discussion with the mayor and the property owners. And we look forward to a positive solution for that. So I just wanted to touch base on that for those who may be on the call who have not heard that update. And please feel free, anyone coming to the podium this evening, you have five minutes to speak. Madam Moderator will guide you into the call, and please raise your hand for her. And when you do get on, please state your name and your address. Thank you. And then the council will respond at the end of, after everyone speaks.
Thank you. Yes, as Madam President said, it was the Raise Your Hand feature, which is located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in attendees, it is star nine. And again, this is for everyone. You do not have to wait for anyone to finish talking. You can hit that button now, and it puts you right in a queue. So Mr. Fagan, you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Before I begin, of course, my name is Joseph Fagan. I'm the Public Information Officer. October kind of caught up with us really quickly here, and I nearly forgot about tonight's meeting. And I want to give a public thank you to Debbie Balazar. I know she's listening, who texted me earlier today and reminded me about the meeting. So I'm kind of embarrassed to say I almost forgot the date. Among the many things fortunately Sean Cox did not find in the river was ballots. And something in the news that may have been of concern to West Orange residents is, was the mail found destined for West Orange in North Arlington. Lieutenant Rollo of the West Orange Police Department has been in touch with the United States Postal Service Office of an Inspector General. And this mail has been recovered and has been delivered to West Orange. And there is an ongoing investigation, and Lieutenant Rowley will keep us posted on any changes. But just to alleviate any concerns, West Orange residents may have, the mail was recovered and has been subsequently delivered. I'd like to, of course, congratulate Sean Cox on his achievement of Eagle Scout. But equally, I'd like to mention his father, Charles Cox, who is a scout leader. And if it hadn't, thank him for his commitment to the residents of West Orange. And certainly on a more uplifting and productive note, there are Eagle Scout, one Eagle Scout project with Councilwoman McCartney mentioned was there were two benches installed in front of the West Orange Public Library by Zinn Cully. He's a member of Troop 23 in Clifton, but he's a West Orange resident and decided to build the benches in front of the West Orange Public Library, and they have planters on the side, and they absolutely look beautiful. But one final thing I'd just like to make note of is that there are actually, and this is unheard of in West Orange history, there are actually five Eagle Scout projects ongoing at this time. There's laptop refurbishing and internet safety training for Washington School neighborhood families in need. There's birdhouse building and installation at the Essex Environmental Center in Roseland. Deer enclosure fencing repair and replacement in the South Mountain Arena. Table, picnic tables constructed at Tullo Springs in the South Mountain Reservation. And school blacktop wall weeding, repair and repainting at Hazel Avenue. I mentioned deer enclosure in the South Mountain Arena. I'm showing my age. Of course, I meant the South Mountain Reservation. And I said that was final, but finally, I'd just like to briefly mention what Councilman Guarino had mentioned about the Hometown Hero banners. There currently are 26 on Main Street, and I'm very pleased to say that we are placing an order for approximately 26 more that will, should be coming in in two weeks. So we will have 26 more in addition to the 26 that are up. And if anyone is interested in the Hometown Hero Banner, they can contact me or Megan Brill through the website downtownwo.com. Thank you very much, Council President Castellino. That concludes my remarks.
Excuse me, Council President, may I just say, Joe, I thought you were going to mention also about the Heritage Trail. I know that you are working with the troop on creating the
Yeah, the Heritage, the Heritage Trail with, I spoke with Charles Cox about that. I don't have an update on the Heritage Trail, so I wouldn't want to misspeak about that. And just for those who are not aware of what the Heritage Trail is, it's something that Scoutmaster Charles Cox has been working on. They designed a logo, and it was made to point out historical landmarks in West Orange. I suspect that it may have taken a backburner with the advent, unfortunately, of the COVID virus and all the shutdowns and cancellations that are taking place. But I don't want to say anything further because, as I say, I don't want to misspeak on it. But I'm sure that it's still an ongoing project for consideration.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Hey, thank you very much. Sally Malanga, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
How you doing?
Hi. First, I want to thank the council and the administration for responding to the concerns of the public regarding the proposed sale of Crestmont Country Club's forested land. I'm speaking on behalf of our Green West Orange members, and we definitely want to see this forest preserved permanently. I think people are so used to having it there that the thought of it disappearing and becoming more houses is something that nobody really wants to see happen. And we especially don't want to have there be another West Essex Highlands scenario with year after year battles and litigation. So we do have an open space consultant, and it would be great to engage that person to find a solution. And I look forward to, and I ask you to, please keep our Green West Orange members apprised of any developments that occur in this process, especially if there is something to celebrate, for example, that the land will be permanently preserved and residents' homes in the surrounding area will be protected from flooding. I think that would be a big relief to the residents in the Pleasantdale area and anyone who cares about climate change matters. On a second note, Resolution Number 195-20, same subject, trees. Forty-six street trees are to be removed for roadwork. Ten of them over 30 inches in diameter and 10 of them over 24 inches in diameter. Now, these are our irreplaceable heritage street trees that are community property. And in our experience over the last few years, our town forester has declared viable trees to be removed for the convenience of the roadwork to be completed. And neighbors then lose their valuable street trees. They lose their shade, their beauty, and their traffic calming. So I'm wondering, what is your suggestion after hearing about this several times, I think? You know, it's kind of a drumbeat. It's a problem with neighbors having to stand out in the street and, you know, beg for their trees to be protected by running curbs around them and sidewalks around them. What is your suggestion to get us all united under the umbrella of protection rather than convenience? And would you be willing to get these trees off of this contract? And last, I'm pressing again for a stronger tree ordinance. You're going to be discussing it at the planning board tomorrow night, as Susan has said. But again, it's, the amendments are great, but we need to have protections for our street trees as well as the elimination of the three-tree exemption. I mean, trees serve as major benefactors to the township, and we owe them and ourselves the respect. And I'm wondering again how we can get this accomplished. I think it matters to a lot of people, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Malanga.
Hey, thank you. Althea Tweetin', if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Althea? If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
I don't see a prompt on my screen. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling because I want to thank you, number one, and thanks to all the
Excuse me, Althea? Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Althea Tweetin', 15 Edgar Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is so new to me. I, I traveled to 280 by way of Northfield, and I go down north, and I make that right on to Whittingham and going on to 280. And I just want to say, it is so dirty on that stretch going from Whittingham down into 280. It's so much debris there. It's horrible. I'm just wondering what can be done to make it clean and to get it cleaned up before we have a lot of rain and snow and then it'll be like that until the spring. It is so, I have never seen it with as much debris, food and cans and whatever as I've seen here recently. So what can be done to rectify that?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tweetin'. We'll answer you at the end.
Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a call-in attendee. The last four digits is 6809. If you can unmute your phone. 6809.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Tashana Green, and I live at 171 Watchung Avenue. I'm actually concerned, I mean, I know this has been an issue in the past. We even had a town council meeting about it when we were, they were mentioning possibly changing the, some of the streets to one-way, which did not happen. Our street really wasn't impacted by that issue. But this has been an ongoing situation where we have had a resident on our street who, you know, has functions weekly, and our street is a parking lot. I feel, you know, especially with COVID being a serious issue, and the mayor and also the chief of police are aware of this because we've been in contact. And I'm just curious to know what can be done because this is a weekly situation. And I feel for the fact that if there's an emergency vehicle that needs to come through here, you know, we'll be in trouble. And it literally stretches from Washington all the way up, going towards almost infield into Montclair from one house. And my concern is not just the parking, but, you know, I realize that, you know, I'm very aware as far as the executive order mandated by, you know, Governor Murphy with, I think, Executive Order 161, where it limits the amount of people in outdoor settings of up to 500. But I'm kind of, you know, a little on the fence as to, you know, I need more clarification as to if he meant in a backyard. And this is just every week, and it's causing a problem. The police are having to come, the noise issue. And, you know, the police come and they, you know, make people move their vehicles, but as soon as they leave, it ensues, it just starts all over again, and it lasts the whole day. And a lot of the residents are really fed up. They don't even want to call the police anymore because they don't know, because they figure nothing's going to be done. I just, you know, would like to know if something can be done because, you know, this has been going on for a long time. And I would think especially now with COVID being, you know, such a, you know, detrimental situation for this country and New Jersey and Essex County being on the top of the list of people who, you know, have contracted it, that it's a problem. There's no masks being worn. And I need someone, please, to, you know, inform me or tell me or help with what is going on on our street.
Excuse me, Ms. Grammer, break my own rule and ask you a question during your comment. Is this only on the weekends? Is it also during the week?
No, it's mostly during the weekend. It starts Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but sometimes depending on, you know, the weather. If it's nice, it happened yesterday. It wasn't as intense, but it's, you know, weekly. And I would think, I thought maybe COVID would slow it down. It's like, I almost want it to rain because when it rains, the street is civil. It's calming, you know. You know, a lot of the neighbors are, you know, we all congregate and are discussing the fact that we can't even have company come over. Where would they park?
Yeah.
I mean, the part of West Orange that I live at is where the cemetery is, and there's that stretch of land where the trees are. And, you know, kids used to ride their bikes around there. They can't do that anymore. They can't do that anymore. And it's really turning, it's been a problem, but I thought something could have been done at this point, especially with it being so bad with COVID. And this is, this is, this is getting crazy. It's getting worse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to answer you when everyone else gets done speaking. And what will, if you could just hang on to the, hang on the call for a little bit longer, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for calling us, calling in.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michael P. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen. Hi, Michael, you there?
Hi, can anybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Pages. I live on Ferris Drive, 29 Ferris Drive. Councilmen and women, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that it's Tuesday evening, and we all have lives to get to. Thank you for the update as it relates to Crestmont Country Club. We certainly look forward to being engaged in a dialogue, to get a sense of how we can be helpful as community members here in Pleasantdale and beyond. I would ask, if possible, that as you communicate with Crestmont and obviously Lenar on the backend, that they maybe just try to give us a little bit more lead time on this next time. I appreciate the meeting was canceled, but on a letter dated the 29th, I believe, so two, three days later, we actually get the notice, which was Thursday of this last week for a meeting this coming Tuesday. And a number of our neighbors and friends celebrated Shabbat this weekend and Sabbath. And so, you know, you're literally talking 48 hours of turnaround time for some people in our community to just, just kind of get their bearings of what was going on. I also appreciate that, you know, in the letter, you directly noticed that there's 200 feet from any proposed construction. But if you look at, for example, Sunnyside, or you think about how Edgemont's going to be impacted, that whole block of Sunnyside has no natural outlets. And so, you know, I appreciate the 200-foot rule, but everybody on that block is going to be impacted by this. If that dead end goes away, and then obviously Edgemont as well, and from our end here in our backyard here in Ferris. So, you know, if you could just communicate that to the powers that be, we certainly appreciate a little bit more lead time. And to include a phone number on the letter would be great. I'm lucky enough to be reasonably tech-savvy. You know, my kids can kind of pound the computer and figure it out for me. But, you know, we certainly have older people in the community who may not be as fast with a link or, you know, a Zoom link and things like that. So they can just include a phone number. I understand they complicate size for them, but, and also to send the mail certified. God bless my wife. She's my better nine-tenths. You know, she kind of, her spider sense took over when she opens this letter, but it effectively looked like junk mail. So, you know, if you're not really digging through your mail every single day and go with such little lead time, it's really a challenge to make sure that we are up to date on what's going on. So listen, we certainly look forward to a robust discussion on the topic. We would like to be engaged and work in partnership and friendship as town members. But, you know, the more lead time and working to make it as easy as possible for people to join would certainly be appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up all those points.
Okay, thank you. And next listed under the Zoom name, it's S Y E D W A B. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Sharon Yedwab. I am piggybacking right off of the former speaker because I live on Cleveland Terrace, 23 Cleveland Terrace. Also received the letter. Very upsetting. We went through this in 2008. And at that time, there were tree ordinances, et cetera. Joe Krakowak was very supportive. The rest of the council unfortunately was not so supportive. I noticed that three people who will be running have something to do with the Sierra Club. So I will be voting and encouraging people to vote for them. This is very serious. There is volcanic rock back there. And what we do to our foundations of our homes, the flooding, et cetera. They're not just talking about putting like another Cleveland Terrace up there with 20 houses. They're talking about 150 units in total on a ridge, which is horrendous. I get the fact that you're all into environment and I'm listening to you talk about all this environmental things. And then I'm thinking to myself, but the reason I'm at this meeting is because they want to basically destroy the whole ecology up there and destroy everything else beneath. This is really unthinkable. And I would like some insight into what the mayor will be talking about with these, with the Crestmont Country Club in terms of preservation, which you brought up. What does this actually mean?
Thank you. We answer you at the end after everybody speaks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
And next, we have Brent Scott. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brent Scott. I live at 75 Nestro Road. I hope everyone is well. My questions tonight concern housing and specifically the Crestmont news that we've had recently. What I would like to know from the council, members can tell us, is that area, the 90 acres that is being proposed for development in a housing development zone already? I understand that it's part of the Gulf, the Crestmont's Gulf course forested land. And is it not already protected? Is it not forested land for a reason? And can it be simply sold and developed to any developer? Is that already a housing development area? That's what I would like to know. Also, I'd like to know if it is, how does that fit in with the master plan that was created in 2010 and updated in 2019 and 2020? So those are the main two things I wanted to talk about on Crestmont. I think that before anything should happen there, the council should ask itself, does this fit in with our master plan? And is that area already designated an area for such development? Not what deal can be made, but is it already designated an area for such development? And if so, why? On housing in general, there are some other things I would like to discuss. And that is, this council has given approval and so has the planning board to apartments and condos and things like that in the past. And that's, that's fine for the most part. But what I didn't notice, I went back and reviewed several years, actually, council hearings. And what I didn't hear in any of that, in any of those discussions, was anything about using recycled material to build new developments, making sure that they're energy efficient and not polluting. None of that was in there. And I understand that the council almost let, let the rent, the rent leveling board, their authority expire until one member of the council happened to notice it. But what I also noticed was that in, what COVID has shown us is the ways that many property managers and some landlords, by no means all, but some landlords, how they use laws and rules to actually harm tenants. So while we are inviting and giving pilots in some cases to developers to come in and build affordable housing, we're not trying to build substandard housing. Nothing was done to protect people from what we now know is the biggest problem, discrimination against people with Section 8, discrimination and retaliation by property managers and landlords for people who complain about mold, leaky roofs, and, and stopped up bathrooms and things of that nature. And when these people go to court, even if they win, their name gets put on a list and they get blacklisted because they had the audacity to demand that the property that they're renting, that they're paying for, you know, be functional, be livable. So what I would ask this council to consider is a law, a specific ordinance. Yes, we have state and federal laws, but I would like very much to see a specific ordinance covering existing housing as well as any new housing, protecting people from discrimination in housing, from being blacklisted because they had the audacity to complain that their home was not livable, and specifically to stop landlords and property managers from discriminating against people with Section 8 vouchers. If we're building affordable housing, that's one way that people afford affordable housing is with Section 8 vouchers, and they shouldn't be discriminated against. And I did not see any of that in any council ordinance by this council. And I would like to bring those things to your attention this evening. But most importantly, we, if at Crestmont, before anything can happen there, we, we should be told right off the bat, is this area already a place that can be developed? And if it can be developed, does that mean there won't be an environmental impact study? And why wouldn't there be an environmental impact study before anything happens? Thank you very much, and I hope everyone is well and remains well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Ah, yes, we have next Joyce, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Joyce Rudin. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
How you doing, Ms. Rudin?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good.
38 Woodland Avenue. I have a few things that I just wanted to bring up, some of which have been mentioned. The, I'm glad that the, the meeting for the Crestmont Country Club was postponed, but I am very concerned that this is now going to be a behind closed door discussion between the mayor and Crestmont Country Club. And I feel that this piece of property affects all of West Orange, in particular, the folks on Pleasant, in the Pleasantale area, but it really affects all of West Orange. And I would like to, as, as other people have asked for, be apprised of when these discussions take place and how they take place, because it is really important to include West Orange residents in these discussions. I just want to call to mind if, if anybody has forgotten about what happened at the Hilltop Development in North Caldwell, when the county sold off an enormous piece of land and a housing project was built despite the agreement of the developer to, to create detainment basins. Homes and neighborhoods have been ruined by non-filtered muddy water runoff that the detention basin was, was supposed to prevent. So I just think taking down all of these trees is going, and especially since this is also on wetlands, is going to do tremendous damage. So I would just like to request that the council look at what happened in North Caldwell at the Hilltop and ask if this is what we want for our neighbors in West Orange. Number two, I just want to mention, because I know Mr. Paglisi will be on the line, a deer was killed today on the corner of Woodland and Prospect. And I have asked many times for the county to put up the sonar red round system throughout the reservation so that animals are not killed on our street. I'm not in favor of the deer hunt. This is a very simple way to keep the deer out of the main streets. This poor doe was killed and two fawns were looking for their mother. It's, it was, it's just tragic. There's a simple, easy way to stop these needless accidents in our township. And finally, the, on, on your agenda tonight is 195-20. It's a street improvement project of $2.7 million. Within that, as, as Sally Malanga referenced, there are a lot of trees coming down in our township. There are eight trees that are six to 12 diameter. There are eight trees that are 12 to 18 diameter. There are 10 trees that are 18 to 24 diameter. There are 10 trees that are 24 to 30 diameter. And there are 10 trees that are over 30 diameter. This is at a cost of $111,000 to remove beautiful old town trees. I am asking you once again to please come up with creative solutions so that our town can save the, the trees and, and take the commitment that this township seems to have made to preserve the canopy at the last meeting seriously. This went on last year where entire streets were denuded. You may recall Dawson and Greenwood and the residents in Barbara, Barbara Street, which stood up and, and had to fight back to preserve some trees on Watson and Samuel and Lincoln and Roosevelt. And it is enough, enough. Please work with the township, work with the engineer to find creative solutions to save our town's trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Yeah, we do. We have a duo here. We have Hannah and Cheryl. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, I'm Hannah Monk and I live at 14 Hoover Avenue.
Hi, Hannah.
Hi. And so I wanted to talk about owning backyard hens. There are two ordinances in West Orange, which would prevent many people from pursuing this. Chapter, in chapter 25, section 9.2 of the municipal code, it states that you need two acres to house animals outdoors. And most, many people would be unable to pursue this. Even though there's another law that says you can have three fowl per acre, you still need the, the two acres, like originally to build or own a coop anyway. And also, according to chapter 10, section 12 in the municipal code, the chicken coop would have to be 50 feet away from any plot line or building. And many, for many people, that's unreasonable. So it would make owning the hens impossible. And I was, I'd like to request that the town council consider changing these ordinances. Since chickens are very beneficial for the environment, providing fresh eggs, they're not very loud. They stay close to the coop, they don't roam very far, and clean coops won't smell bad or attract insects. So I'd like to, to request that the town council consider changing these ordinances. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Hannah.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll answer you at, at the end after everybody speaks.
Next, we have William Rutherford. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Evening, everyone. Bill Rutherford, I live at 8 Hunt Place. Thank you for taking my comment. First, I want to lend support to an earlier commenter, a resident, Tashana Green. I was invited down this week to witness the traffic on Watchung. And from my personal observation, it is absolutely a hazard if there were emergency vehicles that needed to get through. It is literally impossible for two cars to pass by at the same time. And there's just a quality of life issue there. I don't know what is going on, but the level of traffic, the level of parking in that one space while I was there the entire time was absolutely unsafe. So I don't know what we can do about it, but I know we need to do something about it to provide some relief for the residents in that area. Second, I wanted to comment on Crestmont Country Club. I'm glad that you delayed the meeting. I am concerned, as other callers have mentioned, that the ongoing negotiation or discussions will be held behind closed doors. I cannot verify this, but it's my understanding that our mayor has received campaign contributions from Crestmont. I don't know if any on the council have, I would like to know, because I think that poses a conflict of interest when we are having these kind of discussions in closed doors. I think we need full transparency. The residents deserve that. And one of the things that we've been realizing throughout this campaign, y'all know I'm running for town council in full disclosure, is how much the residents really value the rolling hills. I know I do. That's one of the reasons why I moved here. But the trees, the, the greenery is really one of our strongest assets, I'd say. And it's something that consistently comes up about the beauty of West Orange, which is what attracts people here. So we should be doing everything we can to protect that and making sure that we have all of the voices at the table when we make decisions like this and that they're done, you know, not behind closed doors, but in, in full transparency. Finally, on that same vein, I am interested to know if the current council members, Casselino and Guarino, will be voting or will recuse themselves from any votes in the future with regard to Fairview Associates. I understand that Fairview is a donor to America's Future First, who put out a campaign flyer this week in support of three candidates. And should Ms. Williams be elected to the council, I would expect her to recuse herself from that vote too. I think it poses a conflict of interest when Fairview has a no big contract and is weighing in on who should be on the council deciding whether or not they keep that. Those are my comments tonight. I thank you for hearing me out and I look forward to your answers.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak this evening?
We do, we do. Next is Kristen Reinhardt. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Kristen.
Hi there. My name is Kristen Reinhardt. I reside at 33 Ferris Drive. And first of all, thank you so much to the council for your time. And I understand it's getting late and I just want to be super respectful of the council's time. And I just wanted to speak briefly about the issue concerning Crestmont Country Club. I won't sort of reiterate the concerns that were voiced by everybody else, but specifically just wanted to let the council know that, you know, we are extremely concerned and specifically regarding the closed door negotiations or the potential for closed door negotiations with the country club between the mayor. And it's also, I hadn't thought about it until now, but the concern voiced by Mr. Rutherford regarding campaign contributions that have been received from the mayor and present council members and how that may, how that may play any sort of role. So yeah, that's all. Again, want to be super respectful of everybody's time. And thank you so much for all your effort.
Thank you, Kristen.
Hey, thank you. And next, it's just listed as Greg. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Tell me, none of Edgemont Road for, up in Pleasantale area, I want to-
I'm sorry, Greg. I'm sorry. What's your last name again?
Zuckerman, I apologize.
That's okay. You're on Edgemont Road?
I am, for-
Thank you.
Good 20 years. I want to make this quick as well. Yankees, Yankees are starting that soon and I don't want to be conscious, conscious of that. But I also want to thank everyone for all your work. I'm one of these silent majority where I love it here, been here a long time. I do things like volunteering and coaching and all that kind of stuff. But you guys really spend a lot of time helping out. So I want to thank everyone. I also want to express concern about the potential development in Crestmont. Also want to express potential concern if there is, are contributions being made by Crestmont. There, I assume a citizen like anybody else, but this should be disclosed. Um, and I'm not going to go over all the concerns or share the concerns that others have had, but I would like to ask two questions. A, are, is everyone- A, are is everyone has have you guys been apprised of these plans? In other words, have they given you good guys? Have you get they given you notice? Has been sufficient notice? And these it isn't a new thing, you know, we've battled this in the past. So what is the stance that you each have presently? There are obviously no details. We don't have many details. But in broad strokes, it'd be great going into an election season to know for the record where people generally stand. So I don't want to take up any more time, but thank you for all your work for our wonderful city.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Stephen Ferry. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Yes, hello. My name is Stephen Ferry.
Hi, Mr. Ferry.
I live at fifty Edgemont Road. And I want to say that I second or I guess it's third. Everything that Sally and Michael have said, and also my neighbor Greg. And and as far as our opposition is to the Crestmont Country Club development as it stands now. Looking at the project right now, the most thing that the thing that really bothers me and I know even I don't even live on this road, but it turns Sunnyside Highway or Sunnyside Street into a highway. I mean, that road has no cross streets at all. It's on a slope. It's a ski slope essentially. And turning that into a thoroughfare that goes through to Edgemont. It's going to turn to it's going to be very unsafe. I rode up there today and there are kids that play on that street. And it's that's an area of concern. It's not just my small concerns, it's concerns for the whole community. I respect the fact that Crestmont, you know, they own their property and they have private property rights as the mayor has has outlined in in social media communications. But, you know, I don't think the property is actually conducive to home building. To that end, I say that the mayor, you know, he, you know, he can have his discussions with the Crestmont Country Club because we have, I want to remind people, we have a public process. There is a public government process, and as long as that is followed, as long as we get our our public notifications, we can oppose. Crestmont, they have their rights and we respect their rights. We have our rights as well as citizens to object and and give our public testimony during hearings. What I would ask is that maybe perhaps during councils comment or response session, apprise us of what the process is for this development. If Crestmont were to put this development towards the planning council, what's the process? Let us know what the process is, and that will help us understand and react appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Monica Prokowsky. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Hi, Monica, you there?
Hi, Lauren. Can you hear me?
Ah, yes, they are.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I have a couple of different questions on a couple of topics that haven't been touched on tonight, if I may.
Monica, I'm sorry. They just need your name and address for the record.
Oh, gosh, my apologies. It's Monica Prokowsky, seventeen Bloomfield Way. First and foremost, resolution one eighty three dash twenty, the resolution for Vigilant Solutions, that's on the agenda tonight. If someone, whether it's council or administration, could provide a little bit more detail on exactly how we intend to use this technology in West Orange that's proposed here. The information that was shared talks a little bit about booking images in quotes. And Vigilant Solutions itself lists facial recognition technology as one of its core competencies. So considering the concerns that we're all well aware of with this type of technology, it'd be great to know how West Orange is planning on utilizing this within our police department. And then furthermore, will West Orange be sharing information back to Vigilant Solutions? Or is it just a one way feed of information? Second, I'm happy to see that the West Orange Police Department contract is on our agenda tonight. Still disappointed to see that this has taken three years to come to council, but glad to see that negotiations have kicked off again. And it would be great if someone could give an update on where the outstanding fire department contract status stands. And then finally, without taking too much time, I will echo many of the speakers tonight. I've had opportunity to speak with people who live in the immediate vicinity of the Crestmont region. It is a supreme concern for those that live in the area and a concern, I think, for those that don't. That impact both to the trees, the environment, and the increased traffic and roadways that would be built there, I think is not a winning situation for West Orange. So as far as that goes, I would echo them in our concerns and hope that we could put this to bed and and keep it as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Shilpa Manjkar, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Follow the prompt on your screen. Hello, is this working?
Yes.
This is Shilpa Manjkar, seven Reed Street in West Orange.
Okay, you're all set. Go ahead.
So. Thanks. Yeah, so I wanted to thank the council for everything you're doing for the town. And we have a petition that got a hundred and sixteen signatures to lower the taxes, which I emailed out three weeks ago and spoke to many of the council members and the mayor. And yeah, last year's eight point five percent increase, which some council members said included the purchase of the Rock Spring Golf Course, which was supposed to be subsidized, but apparently there hasn't been a business plan. Plus, this year's increase is a ten percent tax increase. And most people have been out of work for three to five months this year. You know, I personally lost one person to coronavirus a week since December. One member of the community lost twenty two people in April. So it's an unprecedented time. The June twentieth meeting, John Gross, the township CFO, said the township was actually under budget, two point seven million behind net spent as usual because of the pandemic closures, retirement of staff. And that even included the state required payouts. So the argument that it's business as usual is not valid. It's not business as usual anywhere in the world this year. And it's like way too much of a burden to keep increasing the taxes. Now, also, this supposedly was supposed to go towards coronavirus. And meanwhile, teachers are spending five hundred dollars out of pocket, you know, to compensate. And as a taxpayer, that doesn't make any sense to me. And as somebody who went to school in West Orange, I mean, if anything, if you're increasing our taxes, it should be taking the burden off of the teachers and other people who are really working on the frontline. Also, I've seen those signs up for at least five years about first responders have not had their contracts renewed, including health insurance. Now they're working through the pandemic. We needed to call the police a couple of times, and they didn't come for like over an hour. During the last few months, we've been taking our own garbage to the recycling center. You know, seniors and retirees are paying out of their social security for these tax increases. And the property values haven't increased. Like, our 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 property is half in South Orange, and our neighbor's property value is like double the amount of ours. You know, amidst all this, when I was in West Orange Public School, it was considered a public private school. It was one of the top school districts in the state, and now I hear that's not true. The diversity has increased. And over the summer, the a lot of the students and parents were complaining that the teachers and staff have not reflected the student body and want that also to be included. And, you know, a lot of people are suffering right now, and I just think it's it's too much for people. So if these taxes are going to give a tax write off to developers, I mean, we've been talking to real estate agents who said that Viscaia is primarily empty. So, I mean, I've traveled all over the world. I have shot a movie in West Orange that showcased the beauty of the nature and the deer that you think you're only going to see in Yellowstone National Park. We see up the block here, we unfortunately hear them getting hunted. Like, that's also very disturbing for us to hear gunshots in the middle of the day. And these, but it, you know, it increases property value. It increases the way people are spending time in nature because of the pandemic. Or generally, it's a healthier environment and place to live to preserve all of these green spaces and animals and their habitat and the oak trees that are hundreds of years old. And it's not necessarily, you know, a better business decision to allow these developers to take over whatever spaces are left. So that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it's just labeled as West Orange Town Council Meeting. This is one that I have to bring over. They have a an earlier version of the of the software. So I'm going to promote panelists. I'm going to turn off your camera and then we'll be able to have you speak. This happened at the other meeting too. So and I'm just going to ask it unmute. So if you can just unmute your screen for me. I apologize. There we go. Hi, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Yeah.
Yes, yep, you're up. You're up. You're up to talk.
You know what? Your thing says that I should go up the lower right hand corner on my screen. This is the left hand corner. I always mess up. It's Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Hey, Rosary. Hey, everybody, okay?
Yep.
Good, yo. Yeah, hanging in there. I just turned white. My hair turned all white overnight. Otherwise, I'm okay. Question, is Bill Keough still around? I wanted to talk about the pickleball court. It's kind of frivolous with all the serious issues that everybody's brought up, which are really very good. But I was wondering if he was around, if he could answer the status.
They answer the questions at the end of the the whole of the whole section.
Okay, is he still around? That's the only thing I need to know.
I see that Edwin is still on the call, so they may still be on the call.
Okay. Well, my question is, I know that these courts have been refinished, the I think the old tennis courts. And the court, the pickleball is supposed to be there. When, if in this season will it start, will be available? And is it intended or expected that there might be some kind of training? I know people are interested like I am, but we've never done it before. So if they could just give us a heads up on what the status is and what the plans are, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'm going to be transferring you back over. Okay, give me one second, guys. Sorry. Okay, back to attendee. Hey, and before we get to Mr. Puglisi, if there's anyone else who would like to speak during public comment, this is your last call. It's the raise your hand button. And if you're one of our call in features, it is the star nine. Again, if you want to talk, you can push the button now. It puts you in a queue. You don't have to wait for anyone to stop talking. Melinda Lee, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Oh, yes, your connection is a little little broken up.
Hello, can you hear me?
I we can.
Okay, good evening. My name is Melinda Huerta. Lee is just my social media, I guess, page or name. I did just have a few comments.
Excuse me, can you state your address for the record? And your name, please. We missed it.
Oh, hello.
Buddy, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get her last name or. It's Melinda Huerta. And then, Melinda, if you could just give us your address again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just give us your address again.
Sorry, it's seventeen Park Drive South, West Orange.
Thank you.
My apologies. Good evening, everyone. I just had just a couple of comments and full disclosure, I have children in the car. So you might have, I hear a couple of whines. My first comment was in regards to the pedestrian safety board. There were a couple of things that we mentioned about. Sorry. There were a couple of things that were mentioned. I'm sorry. There were a couple of things mentioned or brought up about Washington Street and Franklin Avenue by around Washington Elementary School. And my question was, I know that there is a retaining wall issue at Washington Elementary School. And we did go over briefly at the meeting that maybe it would be possible to try to kind of kill two birds with one stone. And since they're trying to do some type of work around that area, if it will be possible to alleviate some of the burden, the financial burden from the Board of Education budget and allocate some funds, you know, either go halfway or something along those terms. I don't know if that has been discussed or has been brought up. My next question or comment. I'm sorry, I got distracted and I lost my train of thought. Yeah, that'll be all for this for tonight. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
We did. We had a couple more people raise their hand.
Okay.
Yes, so we actually have someone who raised their hand who already spoke this evening. It is only one time up to the stand. So this time you can lower your hand. We won't be taking a second comment from people. Mark Paul, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Mark Paul. I'm at twenty seven Sunnyside. So I guess I'm right in the thick of things when it comes to the Crestmont proposal. I did not get a letter. Perhaps that's because I'm a twenty seven and which may not be far up enough the street to be within the limitation as to, you know, who got the letter and who didn't. Anyway, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I'm very much against this. I've been living in the town since nineteen seventy nine. I may be either the oldest or one of the oldest people on the block. Love the town, like the street, like the neighborhood. My biggest concern, of course, is traffic, but more than that is the flooding issue. Now, in the early nineteen eighties, I put in a French drain around my foundation as well as some pump. It's alleviated the problem pretty much. I still get a little water in my basement from time to time, but it's really, I don't consider an issue. But what I'm really concerned about is if that development goes ahead and all of that land becomes essentially paved or a lot of the open space goes away. I'm very concerned about flooding down the street for myself and my neighbors as well. I know we all have similar issues. Many of us have put in systems, but and my system is a good one. I have two sun pumps and a drain all the way around the house, and still I have issues from time to time. I can't imagine what it would be if this development goes through. And I really kind of feel like if this happens, I'm sort of being forced out. And I really don't want to be put in that position. So that's pretty much it. I, you know, I echo the concerns of all of my immediate neighbors, and I wasn't really aware that Sunnyside was going to be one of the main streets going up. Now I'm aware of it. But so that's another issue is the traffic. But more than that is is the potential greatly increased flooding. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. And we're going to respond to everyone after everyone, the last person comments.
Hey, and thank you. And Sharon Sherman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thank you. Sharon Sherman, seven Lakeview Drive. My comments really are all about this Crestmont development. I guess my first question is, since this has been discussed previously years ago, I'm curious to know what has changed in Crestmont's proposal to make this now being possibly considered a viable development. Secondly, living on Lakeview Drive, I'm concerned, as other people have stated here, about the flooding issue. As is now, when there. When there are serious rains, you look out the windows here and you see the water runoff from down the hill is just obscene. It pools down at the bottom of Lakeview and Pleasant Valley Way where we have significant flooding issues until the water dissipates. We can stand in our yards and we can watch water flowing through retaining walls. So flooding is going to be a serious, serious factor. The other issue that I am extremely concerned about, while it's not being, from what I'm hearing, because again, I did not see any proposals, I did not get any kind of notice. Lakeview, as it's originally named, Victory Boulevard is one of the wider streets here in West Orange. So somehow or another, I have this sneaky suspicion that if this development does go through, that Lakeview will become. An entrance and exit from this development as well as additionally more of a. Cut through for people from Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock. And we're told, or at least I thought I've been told, that speed bumps aren't plausible on our street because of access. For, for emergency crews, fire trucks, et cetera. There are a lot of homes where people coming in and out of driveways, children in the streets. Are at risk currently of cars that come speeding down Lakeview. And it really is amazing and, and really thank God that no one has been hit, but there is serious potential. For accidents and, and problems. Also, I'm concerned about the amount of traffic that any such development will. Add to Pleasant Valley Way where if anybody comes and takes a look and we've, we've had traffic control studies. If you take a look at those studies, you'll see the amount of traffic, especially in the afternoon hours. So I think that all of this needs to be looked at. And finally, I'm curious. What this potential development, what the effect will be on our schools. The addition of so many homes and the addition of families and more children in schools that are ready. Bursting at their seams. We, are we going to need more buildings? So I look forward to hearing your answers. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and. That brings us to Mr. Puglisi. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, this is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I'm just going to follow Lauren's lead and just talk about whatever she puts on the screen. So you have two flyers there, the one on the left. The county executive recently announced a new emergency rental assistance program. As we're all aware, a lot of people have been unable to pay their rent during the pandemic. So there is a link on our website, which is Essex County NJ dot O R G. There's a red box that has a variety of coronavirus information. And the link to this emergency rental assistance program is the top bullet in that box. There is a limited time. We unveiled this on October second and it's going to remain open until October twenty-third. Based on the participation by the public, the deadline may be extended, but I wouldn't recommend residents who are interested in this. To wait that long, I would recommend that if they feel that they can benefit from this program, that they. Go online and submit their application as soon as they can. The flyer on the right is our, promotes our Essex County Recycling Day for computer and electronics. As we did this past weekend, we've had, we have extended the time. Because this event was canceled in the spring, so instead of just the one Saturday. Excuse me, the one Saturday, it's going to be two days, Friday, October sixteenth and Saturday, October seventeenth. Just by note of participation, we had our household has this waste collection day. Three days last week, we had over twenty-six hundred cars go through, which is a phenomenal amount. And it just shows how much people want to protect the environment and, and get hazardous materials out of the waste stream. Next slide. We are going to continue, as per the county executive, the weekly food distribution events. This week, we're at the Charles Bullock School in Montclair. Nine o'clock is the start time. Again, this is a drive-through and a walk-up event. And as, like I said, as per the county executive, he wanted to continue these as far into the year as we can. So I will be sharing this information with you on a weekly basis. Next one. Again, the, the testing, we're. Going out to more sites throughout the county. We still maintain one test day at Weekway Park every week. The Weekway Park Test Site is unique in that you can just drive up or walk up, no appointment is necessary. The other sites that are listed there. You do need an appointment and you can either call the number that's there on the flyer or go to EssexCovid dot O R G. And the reason, the turnaround for results is. Getting faster. I've been told that people can get the results within two days at this point, so that's very helpful. I think that's all my flyers. I just wanted to. Respond to a couple of questions that were raised. One, Ms. Rudin had mentioned a sonar device. We don't have any sonar devices for deer. We have a variety of reflectors. One does emit a sound as cars approach. We do not put those in residential areas because of the noise. You can't turn them on and off, so it would be very disruptive if we put those in residential areas. I will go to our Public Works Department and ask them what can be done at that intersection that she talked about. And earlier this week, I had a conversation with Councilman Guarino. We are repaving Gregory Avenue. And it's, he asked about adding some crosswalks by Gregory School. If I can get those locations, I can share that with our Public Works Department. At this time, it's my understanding that we would just re-stripe the road based on the striping that was there previously. But if you can get me those locations, I can definitely ask our, our Public Works to take a look at that. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. One thing before I let you go and, and thank you all for your efforts. We had a resident on. That earlier Miss Tweet, and I'm not sure if you're on the call then. She was referring to the ramp, the entrance, down by the entrance ramp on two eighty. On Whittingham, there's a lot of litter down that way. I was wondering if you could put that on your list of entrance ways and if you could look into that site. Cause it has been terribly littered.
Well, Whittingham is a municipal road and then the ramp is a state highway.
The ramp is state, it's not you. Okay. Okay, then Mister, Mister Sarris is getting that chore then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you this evening. A lot of speakers and I don't blame you. When I first heard about the, the potential talk of development at Crestmont Country Club. It, it definitely was very disturbing and, you know, we've been in litigation for years with the West Essex Highland Property. We are, we've been very responsive in regards to open space purchasing, the acquisition of Rock Spring Golf Club. And will be diligent here. It was my understanding. That the developer was putting out feelers to the community. I wasn't on the council when this came. And to the community and I guess it was two thousand eight. And, you know, with COVID and, and times being what they may. I guess the, the owner is probably seeing what he could do with the property. And so with that being said, I know the mayor had, I read that statement earlier that the mayor had put out. I'll let Councilwoman McCartney talk about, you know, protocol with the planning, planning department, because she's on that board for us. And so I think this is basically, they're putting feelers out. And I'm glad the community's coming out strong. It, it's important. And I'm glad the mayor is working with them. And one of our callers made a great point with, you know, these conversations will be had. And they eventually be brought to the public, but really disappointed with the innuendos. About back room door deals and everything else, but I guess that's to be expected is, it is campaign season here in West Orange. So I know the mayor's working diligently and, you know, hopefully we'll see what happens. But I'll let my colleagues comment on that. Before I turn it over to them, just a few things with our staff to respond. First of all, Mr. Smiraldo, there was talks about section, section eight and rent control and whatnot, so. Our former Fire Chief Pete Smiraldo, he has come back to us since we had a retiree. In a, in the form of our public housing section eight director. And he's just begun scratching the surface and revamping. That department, he's updated the website, the phone number, if you need to get in touch with him is nine seven three, three two five, four one oh seven. And he'll be bringing forth any changes in regards to ordinances that we need to update. So he's been very diligent. And we expect to see a lot of great progress there in regards to that department. Mister Sarris, if you can please. Get in touch with property maintenance on Whittingham and in touch with estate on the entrance ramp.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. So then, thank you, Miss Tweet, for bringing that up. We'll, we'll take care of that. And let's see, Mister Lepore, I believe we have him here this evening. If he could touch base quickly on the resolution tonight in regards to. The trees that need to be taken down on with the road pavement. We could patch him through.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, how you doing?
Very well, thank you. There are no specific trees in this project that includes, I believe, up to thirteen streets. That are designated to be removed. We're going to examine all the trees on, on each street. Undoubtedly, some will perhaps be hazardous or diseased. We're going to remove those. We also work with the homeowners on all the streets to try to put a balance between making improvements. Repairing curbs and sidewalks as well as preserving trees. I think a number of you are familiar to some of the extents that my department went through recently on Old Indian Road. To work with a property owner who really wanted to see a tree along a section of Old Indian Road in her rear yard preserve. So these are an estimated quantities. It doesn't mean any one specific tree is going to be removed. But we're going to look at all the trees and should there need to be trees removed even just for disease or hazardous conditions, there are prices. That we have from our contractor to do that. And again, I just want to emphasize. There are always two sides to tree issues and we try to work with all, all sides to strike a balance.
And thank you, Mr. Lepore. I know you've been going to individual property owners the past couple of weeks in regards to your concerns they had. With, with the roadwork, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
With that, and we may need you to stick around, we get to the ordinance as well. Okay, with that, I'm going to open up comments. Just real quick, Mr. Kyo, I think is still on the line, a pickleball, Mr. Kyo? There's a comment about that, were you looking?
They'll, they'll just step away, but I can handle it. They were there. They started paying tennis courts last week. They are scheduled to return to. Begin striping them tomorrow, so we anticipate them opening very soon. And we will be more than happy to create some type of a pickleball class to teach everybody the fundamentals of the game.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to open the comments to my colleagues, Councilman Guarino. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You want, you want to continue first, Council President, since you're on, you're on a roll?
No, I, I need to, I need some time to get some notes together, so I'll, I'll leave it to you folks. So you could start, if you're not ready, go to Councilwoman Kocoviac.
No, so, okay, I mean, thank you, Council President, you've basically covered and told Mr. Lepore first a section. On the trees for the ordinance and I think that's a very good idea. We still need to get deep into it and make sure that. Every tree that can be saved, is saved and if it is diseased and if people who are concerned about it want to see that they are truly diseased and can't be saved. I think they need to be brought into the picture, so they have a real eyewitness account of the trees that are, if they need to be removed. And so I'd like to see that and I know Mr. Lepore is worried, except on, I'm glad on Old Indian Road for Miss Pierre, on Old Indian Road that that tree was taken care of. So that I'd like to see happen, so thank you. With Crestmont Country Club, I mean, Councilwoman McCartney could basically answer the best question for that. The only time I heard about this is when I started getting the emails about this and it really upset me that it's something that was coming out this quick. And we had no awareness of how to review this and what was going on and what the extent of the project would be. I'm very concerned about future development, particularly there. To answer one of the residents' questions, is it protected? Well, Councilwoman McCartney should probably tell us that in the planning board, isn't, unless it was paid for by open space money or green acres. Other than being protected by, by the master plan, that's, that's one of the questions and that, you know, I said, this is like. Out of the blue, I only heard about this from all the emails that I got the last day or so, so. I really would like to get more into this and we need to be very, you know, just, you know, on this, we don't want any more flooding. We don't want to take away people's, you know, their, their, their livability, walkability. And to put a more burden on the infrastructure of the community. To one of the residents, she was talking about prices, housing values and the school system. Well, the town council doesn't take care of the school system. I'm sorry to say, you know, we have the municipal side. The budget this year is not going up ten percent. If you're talking about the total, then you have to look about all four components of the tax rate. The town budget's only going up less, I mean, two point something percent. So I don't know where the ten percent is coming from and thus it's coming from the school board, the county and the library. Expense for that, but property values are going up in West Orange. Talked to most realtors in the area. Places, especially in the Gregory section, you know, houses going to market three days or sold and they're selling for a lot more than their asking price. And so I just understand where some of these, you know, comments are coming from, where the information is coming from, I'd like to see that too. But it doesn't reflect in, in, in what's happening. To Hannah and Cheryl, the ordinance, well, you know, it's something I like to get interested and look into because if you go back a few years. I was a proponent and Mrs. Malanga could tell you that I was a proponent for the feral cat, the TNVR ordinance, which. A lot of people were against because they were totally unaware what it really meant to preserve and to. To humanely diminish the population, the feral cats, which are, which are a health reason, but. We remain, you mainly did it and I thank Mrs. Malanga for working with me on that and Judy Stires, who still heads up. The TVM program, so I'm going to take a bigger look at this and talk to the people. I know the Health Department was vehemently against TVNR. So let me see what I can do on this and get some information and we'll get back to you. And I admire what you want to do. Animal, raising animals are fun, so like, you know, you'd like to live on a farm sometimes and just be away from suburban urban. And, and just enjoy the great outdoors. Talking about Washington Corridor and the streets and the screen that was brought up. The fact of matter is, a few weeks ago, we had a walkability study and a technical logical walkthrough of the Washington Corridor. Which will affect many of the streets in, in the area where you live. And hopefully, we're applying for a grant to institute the work that has been recommended for that area. And it should put some efforts into relieving the situation on your street. It's, you know, it's quality of life. You know, you don't want to live in an area where there's constant traffic, where there's parking, double parking. You know, streets are being one-way, two-way. So hopefully, if we get the grant. Through the walkability audit that we did, and I thank a lot of the residents for participating. One of the many things of pedestrian safety advisory board I've been able to accomplish. So if we get the grant, which would be nice, a sustainability grant, that will go towards doing some work down. In the area. Crestmont, we, we talked about Crestmont, you know, concerned. Oh, Crestmont, we talked about Crestmont, you know, concerned about trees. Trees are the very most important thing for ecology. That was the whole thing with buying Rock Spring Country Club. Can you just imagine a developer bought Rock Spring Country Club? All those trees on 140 acres would be gone. Would you see the bigger carbon footprint? You would just see the water flowing down from Cable Lake down into the Gregory section. You would see eighteen more streets approximately, 2,200 units of housing, more schools that would have to be built. So when you want to talk about ecology and saving trees and, and open space and greenery, think about Rock Spring Country Club. And, 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 and that was a whole ideal and that was a whole concept too of preserving that open space for our residents in perpetuity. And eventually, once the final plans are drawn up, once the mayor has his meeting. And when he presents the plan that's going to be done to develop Rock Spring Country Club, then the next step is to apply. For the Green Acres Grant. Right now you can't apply for the grants because there's no plan in place. So once that plan is in place, we can apply for those grants and I'm sure we'll get them. And then once. The property is paid for by Green Acres money, it can never, never, never be developed. And, and that's one of the great things about open space and, and green acres and green acres money. And going back, you know, hopefully with Crestmont, we'll get some more information. I'm sure Councilwoman McCartney can give us some concepts and ideas of. You know, what's going on and what will be presented to the planning board. And we appreciate that. And to answer one question, now people kept bringing up about contributions from Rock, from Crestmont. I don't know of any contributions from Crestmont. So that I don't know. And contributions, you know, there, there's the big thing on Facebook about a mailer that went out. That had Councilwoman Castellano's candidate Tammy Williams and my picture on them. And it said right in there that was not asked by us. We didn't, we were not asked. We were not inquired. We were not informed. It was a surprise. And if somebody came to me and said, would you like it? I would have said no. So I would have said very no. I mean, there was also a Florida done two years ago for two candidates in the township. In Board of Education by the same pack and nobody said anything. But with a council race, they're saying something and they're saying because of Fairview. Fairview was only a small part of the contribution of this. And a majority of this contribution was NJEA. Teachers Union. Nothing ends teachers. I'm very fond of teachers and we need our teachers. But to say that, you know, to put out there and keep asking and keep asking, we didn't ask for it. And I can't speak for Councilwoman, Council President Castellino or Council candidate Tammy Williams. But I didn't ask for it. And if anybody asked me if I wanted to do it, I would have vehemently said absolutely not. But if you asked me if I'm going to abstain or recuse myself from Fairview votes, I didn't ask for it. And, you know, I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to recuse myself for votes. But let me ask you a question. Some of the council candidates out there. That accepted money from restaurants and bars and maybe from the police and fire unions and everything else. Are you going to recuse yourself? Or taking out to recuse yourself from voting on their liquor contracts or contracts? Tell me that. If you can tell me that, that'll be the same. But. Their money is been given to other candidates and candidates have taken money from restaurants and bars and other situations. So I don't apologize for that thing. I didn't ask for it. I didn't want it. It was a surprise to me. It stays right in the mailer. And it's just something that is on and on and on. So that is my answer to you. And my vote is not up for sale. My vote has never been up for sale. And I resent the fact that that was, you know, that's been the topic of conversation. And, you know, most important thing is, is credibility. So that's my, that's my answer. But. The most important thing is for us to look into what's going on with Crestmont. And the other thing is, is Councilwoman, I will have questions and may pull Resolution 183 dash 20 because I have a lot of questions on, on that proposal. So thank you, Council President.
Sorry, didn't realize I was muted. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Kocoviac.
I want to say thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, who took time out of their evenings and childcare to, to weigh in. And I really appreciate it. There's been so many people. I can't remember the last time there were nineteen speakers. I, I may not be able to address everybody. It's, it's not intentional. It's just, I, I can't pull it all together. But just in some, in some of the general areas where there were a lot of comments with Crestmont. There's a lot of questions, a lot of concern about. Information about transparency and about the process and, and lots of opposition. I don't know much about the project. Somebody asked, I can't remember who, I think perhaps, perhaps it was Mr. Zuckerman or I, I'm sorry, I just can't remember. Were asked what, what my position was on that project and I tend, I, I don't want to take a position now because I don't know nearly enough about the project. But I, I. Yeah, I think we need more tree and less residential in a mountainous area like us. We're, we've got serious problems with water runoff and being at the top of a mountain, not a whole lot of drainage. So. Those two things are very important. I agree with Mr. Rutherford that the natural beauty of West Orange is a, a great asset for the town. But little by little, we seem to just keep cutting it down and putting up houses. So that's sort of my position at, at this point. Again, trees were a big subject tonight. There was some mention that there is some proposed amendments to our tree protection ordinance. That I have to go before the planning board for review and then come back to the council. I think there's general agreement that the amendments that are made there are good, good improvements. But they also do not address some of the other areas of tree protection that seem to just be constantly coming up. Meeting after meeting. And. For those of you who have been on previous council meetings, you've heard some comments about these amendments and also comments that. This is not any sort of end in itself that we can make a amendment if we want. And it just occurred to me, just listening tonight, that maybe. What we should do is create a committee in the council. That tries to address a couple of these issues, one Crestmont and the other trees. Certainly to fact find on Crestmont and additional transparency and even input. And also look into the potential for protecting or acquiring, preserving that area. And also, you know, taking a look at some of the other areas of the potential additional amendments to. The tree protection ordinance. And I was just going to bring this up at the, a little bit later in the meeting at the. Matters pending portion of the meeting and see if maybe the rest of the council agrees with it. That might be a more formal way to, to try to address a lot of the concerns that were, that were expressed today. I, I am a little bit uncertain as to the continuing problem on Watchon. Because it seems to me if there are traffic problems. Those traffic problems have been dealt with for literally decades on the street. And it would seem to me it would be fairly easy to just start doing what we call directed patrols by the police and. Just ticket anybody who is, who is violating the regulations. And that should go a long way. To fixing the problem because. For those of you who don't know, Watchon, you know, you, you can get in, into bottleneck problems and we can't have that. We need. Emergency vehicles to be able to. Get through there at, at all times. So. I don't know, Mr. Sayers, can you convey this? I don't think Police Chief Abbott is, is, is on our call tonight.
Yeah.
Certainly, I, I, I think it's appropriate, given what we've heard, for him to look further into that issue and perhaps do patrols. And then perhaps if he or you could come back at the next council meeting and, and let us know what the status of that is. I think that would. Be good for a number of reasons, but primarily safety and, and also serving the residents in that, in that area.
Which area was that again, Councilman? I'm sorry.
He was talking, the resident was talking about problems at Watchon, I believe it was.
Watchon, I got you. Okay.
I suspect if you mentioned it to the, the traffic folks, they'll know exactly what you're talking about.
Absolutely. It's always, it's always been a problem. The problem is parking over there. That's the biggest problem.
Yeah, there, there's always a problem with parking, but it sounds like it's really bad now that, that people are having large gatherings on a regular basis, which of course they, they can do. But not to the detriment of, of the safety and passage.
Yeah, I hear you.
So maybe if you could take that as a to do to talk to the police chief and then just report back to us at the next council meeting. I think. I think maybe the resident who spoke will probably, Ms. Green will probably also come back. But I just want to say, Ms. Green, thanks for bringing this to our attention. Let me try to address some of the other items. Mr. Fagan, thanks for the update on the, on the signs. Ms. Tweetin. I think. It's a problem because the property at the entrance ramp is. Is state property and. It's, it's hard to get the state to move sometimes. And we've had, we've had issues on that before, but please keep us surprised of, of what's. What's going on there. Mr. Scott, thank you very much for your questions. I, I was very concerned to hear you talk about tenant blacklisting. If you have any documentation or evidence of that, that that's going on here in, in West Orange, would you please send it to the council because. We do need to address. If of, of the state and federal. Housing discrimination laws, then we need to, we need to get on that. Ms. Ruden, I, I, if you could forward that information about. A simple way to protect deer and other wildlife in heavily traveled areas. Please send it along and see what, what we can do either ourselves or to pass it on to the county. I agree to, I agree with you. It's, it, it may be a. A regular occurrence, but if it's unnecessary and it's something that we can fix easily, I certainly would like to look back on that. I believe it was Ms. Monk who was talking about keeping wildlife in the backyards and perhaps changing. The ordinances to be more accommodating. I wonder if she could send the citations that she spoke so knowledgeably, but. A little bit faster than my fingers could move. If she could just send that information to, in an email to the council at council@westorange.org. I think that would help speed up our further looking into perhaps amending those ordinances. Mr. Rutherford, thanks very much for bringing up some important issues. I can confirm to you that Crestmont Country Club did give. Mayor Prezi a campaign contribution, the maximum allowed by law of $2,600 in the campaign for mayor two years ago. And they did it under a lesser known section of the law that allows nonprofits such as Crestmont. To actually be politically active as opposed to the, the, the more well-known law, which is, which would prevent nonprofits from political activity. And you should also know that the mayor, for at least the last three or four years, has recused himself from any. Anything having to do with Fairview. And I, I don't know why he does, but, but he has done that as, as well with, with Fairview. And I think I, 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 I agree with you that, that those do present at least the appearance of conflict of interest. And it's something that I urge all the political, all, all the elected officials in West Orange to stay as far away from them as, as possible. Just for this reason, because even the appearance of, of. Of a conflict of interest weakens the respect that some people have for. For how their government operates. Let's see. Yes, it was Mr. Zuckerman who, who asked about the stance. So I've, I've answered that. I will, I will let somebody else who may be more knowledgeable about where things would go with Crestmont. We, there was some mention that there is a public process. There is indeed. And I'm kind of curious as to why the mayor. Seems to be involved directly with the proposed or the, the proposed developer and property owner because indeed. These sort of projects typically go directly to either the planning board or the zoning board. And don't generally involve negotiations or discussions with the, with the administration. So I think if we, as a council, do determine. To create a committee, perhaps we could get involved in that and also get a better view of, of why these are, why these things are happening and. And explain it or at least convey it to, to the residents. Ms. Bukowski, I agree with you. I do have some, some questions about Vigilant and I didn't see, I didn't find any. Any news coverage that indicated that, that this has been a problem with other municipalities. There's a lot of new stories about. Vigilant providing services to various municipalities, but nothing that seems to indicate that there are any sort of. Privacy concerns or, or, or anything like that. But I, I certainly am looking forward to the discussion about this proposal. Ms. Mancakar, I, I appreciate your efforts. And I agree with you. I, I agree with you generally. I, I don't think this was the year to raise taxes. Given all the stress for so many people from the epidemic, the pandemic, but. You know, the, the, the council operates as a, as a body and I couldn't get two other votes for any of the other proposals to lower the taxes. So the. The, the municipal tax rate this year is pegged at 1.7% increase, which comes on top of last year's eight and a half percent increase. The actual, that, that's the, the increase in the tax levy. We should know what the increase is to the tax rate. Sometime in, in upcoming weeks and we'll, we'll be sure to pass it along to you. Ms. Morelli, I'm glad you got your information about pickleball. Perhaps I'll see you out there. There was a suggestion, I couldn't, I, I couldn't get the name. The person who lived on Parks Drive South. Was asking questions about pedestrian issues and then also talking about a retaining wall. Issue at Washington School and suggesting that perhaps. The town would consider or the, the council would consider shifting some of the financial burden of, of a, of a potential wall there over to the town. You should know that I'm pretty adamant that we as a, as a municipal government should not be providing any funding, financing. For projects that are done on. School property. We have a totally separate municipal entity, the school district. That is so supposed to be handling that and should be done that way. I, I would not be in favor of paying for any improvements on. School property. I think that's all for now. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Teubran.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just going to go in order because I don't want to miss anyone who took the time to join us here this evening for an over two hour public comment now. I appreciate everyone's comments, considerations and thoughts and suggestions. So I will start with Ms. Malanga. Thank you for your comment with respect to preserving those trees that ordinance. Was an ordinance that I was going to ask Council President to have polls for further discussion. I am also concerned about the removal. Of the trees. And while Mr. Lepore indicated that they were not slated to be removed, it was something that I, I think I understood him to say that they were. it was something that I I think I understood him to say that they were included in a in a proposal. Certainly looking forward to that discussion with my council colleagues. I do agree that we do need stronger ordinances to protect our trees and the elimination of the three tree exemption. I have been looking at other municipalities ordinances. I have found that there is and perhaps that is a solution that we can discuss or a proposal where we can have an ordinance that creates a tree commission that is comprised of residents throughout West Orange and the different sections of West Orange so that while we do have an environmental commission, I do understand that. I believe that a focus on tree preservation, particularly our municipally-owned trees, a commission may be helpful even to the council in doing some collaboration and research with whatever projects are proposed with the municipality. Certainly something that I've thrown out there before, have not put anything together unfortunately to date, but would be interested to see if the council would entertain a tree, an ordinance creating a tree commission comprised of residents and and some representatives from the administration as well. Ms. Tweetin, I I'm hoping that Mr. Sayers will be able to have a response with respect to the debris on Whittingham on that ramp going towards 280. I I was appreciative that at least the potholes in that area were somewhat repaired. So hopefully they will be able to take care of the debris in that area as well. Mr. Shawna Green, if you could email the council just as a follow-up, I'd love to talk with you further on this. I'm not aware of exactly what the issues are, but I'm sure Mr. Sayers is is already discussing this with the chief of police, but I'd like to hear from from you directly. If you can, please email. That would be great. And I will follow up with you. Mr. Pages Michael, I'm sorry that they only gave you a 48-hour notice for the letter to answer your question. We were not aware, at least I was not. I became aware of this Crestmont proposal or a development or intent to say, I don't even know what it is at this point because I became aware of it through your emails. So I I've not had any contact or communication with the mayor. I I heard Council President Castellino read something that the mayor had posted online, but I have not had any communication with him. And I do agree that engaging the community, particularly those who are going to be, while we will all be impacted, you know, those who are more directly impacted should be able to come together and and have suggestions and discussions with the Crestmont. Ms. Bob, also agree with you that 150 units on the ridge is 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 incredibly concerning. I know you use the term ridiculous and really unthinkable, but I I do agree with you on the focus of preservation. And and your question to what that actually means to the council, I think for me, it means a focus, again, putting together a commission that advocates for the trees comprised of residents that would help council make better choices and decisions on what contracts we approve and what we don't approve when it comes to the removal of trees. Mr. Scott, thank you for your comments on with respect to protection of our resident renters. It is something that you mentioned about the specific ordinance that was almost expired and a council member, that council member was myself, who was looking to see what the protections for our residents renters was and noticed that the expiration of that rent control ordinance, which does provide some protections to our residents, had already expired and it has been expired for a number of years. Thankfully, the mayor immediately responded and it was on our agenda and the ordinance is now implemented. To echo Council President Castellino's comments with respect to Mr. Smiraldo, I will say that he has been incredibly responsive in our communication in 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 his contact with the rent leveling board, because we have a rent leveling board, has put up information on the website to make sure that that is accessible to all of the residents and has been engaged. And I'll thank my appointee on the rent leveling board, Khabira Myers, who is an attorney, and this is what she does for the city of Newark. She has certainly helped with all of the information updating that was required and I look forward to while the rent leveling board is not an advocate organization for renters in town, I also feel that we should have one, a place for our renters to go. I know that we are not the municipal authority over housing. That would be Newark's landlord-tenant court. However, I think it behooves us all to help our residents at least give guidance and direction as to the programs that are available or what avenues they can seek assistance from. You also asked whether or not it was a housing development zone already. Within our master plan, I looked. It is not indicated. I'm not saying that it is not. I'm just saying I didn't see it in there. However, that is a discussion that should be had and I'm sure we will have in in any other discussions with Crestmont. With respect to energy efficient and not polluting plans, there have been and I and I've been to the planning board where where when when a project is presented, there are concerns and questions and raised with respect to making sure that there is a an incorporation of energy smart and environmental friendly specifications, if you will, whether it be a garden roof or or solar panels on a roof or water retention, ground wells. So I I think that 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 happens, has happened. I've I've been to meetings. I I've heard discussions. Ms. Rudin, I 100% agree with you with respect to doing something creative for preservation of our trees. Again, I'm going to continue to say it. Hopefully, we can have a tree commission that's comprised of residents that will be able to help council and work with the neighbors and residents to make sure that we have a comprehensive and effective preservation plan for our trees. Thank you, Mr. Puglisi, for addressing the concern with respect to the sonar around the the reservation. If he is next. Ms. Hannah Monk, my apologies for not having yet done the research on the chicken coop ordinance. Looking forward to being able to have that discussion with our my council colleagues. If you can, I'll echo what Councilman Corvick said. Forward that information to the council. It'll make it easier for us to just access and review for discussion. Mr. Rutherford, thank you for your comments with respect to support of Tashana Green's concerns and the hazard that is present on Watchung Avenue. Certainly appreciate that insight as well. With respect to Crestmont, I'm going to address that issue momentarily. And your and your raising of campaign contributions and flyers of Fairview Crestmont, I'll address that all in one. So bear with me for a moment, please. Ms. Reinhardt, I I I do understand and I know, I think it was Mr. Pages that also mentioned, or perhaps it was Mr. Ferry that mentioned that with respect to the closed-door discussions, if you will, there is a public process and the public should be included. I also understand that Crestmont is a private owner, but I do believe in the power of the people and when when everyone organizes and they advocate for common good, I believe that that is usually wins out over any other focus that a developer may have. So I will continue to pay attention to what is happening, look forward to those discussions and and look forward to attending the meeting that Crestmont will have with the residents and for the township. Mr. Zuckerman, silent majority. So many of us are a silent majority when it comes to local governance, not just here in West Orange, but everywhere. You know, most times we're talking about policies with respect to garbage and salaries and, you know, but it is it is good for all of us to be here today. I'm glad that you you were here and I I completely appreciate your comments. Your question was, have we been appraised of any of these plans? I have not been. Have we been given notice? The only notice that I was given was by every email I received in the last several days, which by now is over 100, I am sure. So I appreciate your notice to me. And 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 I agree, it's a good thing to know where we stand, particularly during election season. Mr. Ferry, thank you for your comments with respect to the public process. We we should be able to be informed as the conversations are moving forward. And absolutely, as we become appraised, we will keep the public appraised. I hope we are all in the same room together, actually, as to the process as it's so that we can all better understand. Ms. Bukowski, thank you very much for bringing up the Resolution 183-20 with Vigilant Solutions. It is one that I had slated to also have pulled for discussion because I do have questions in that regard. I I I will reserve my comment on the police contract. It has been a very, very long time since they they came to any sort of agreement. While I am excited that they do have an MOU, I have concerns with that MOU, which I will share later during council discussion. It is also the resolution that I want pulled. You also asked for an update on the fire department contract. While I don't have an answer for you, I do know that the resolution that was approved by council accepting the approving the memorandum of understanding. I'm sorry for those who don't know what that acronym is. The MOU is a memorandum of understanding, which is signed in advance of or during contract negotiations to update and amend an expired or expiring collective bargaining agreement for unions. And when the fire department's memorandum of understanding resolution was 13719, so that was in 2019, that memorandum of agreement or understanding was not signed by the fire department. So I would imagine, although council approved it, having noticed that it was not signed but both during council meetings and during the budget meeting and by township attorney, the council majority approved a resume, an MOU, a memorandum of understanding or agreement that was not signed. So I would imagine that they would have to rescind this this MOU memorandum of understanding and create a new one for the fire department if they are to move forward in their negotiations as well. I agree with you with respect to the Crestmont comment. Doesn't sound like a winning situation for West Orange, but I am looking forward to those conversations. Ms. Manigar, I have I I have to agree with you. My first year on the council, my first budget did see that 8.5% increase. It was painstaking to go through, understanding that a lot of what had happened throughout the budget season with respect to increases in state mandated obligations that the township has nothing to do with, unfortunately, like our pension benefits, our contractual salary obligations. There there were a lot of things that that were unavoidable. And while council did try to, after 13 hours of going line item by line item, did try to reduce and we did reduce it by some, it there there was nothing that further that we could do to save the 8.5% in increase, unfortunately. During the time of budget season, if you go back and you look at the township website, there is a presentation wherein the council was given a Plan A and a Plan B. And the Plan A, they were both bad, but the Plan A was less, I won't say less bad, but it was a lesser of two impacts for our community. The Plan B was a 12% increase in two years. Unfortunately, that was a decision that had to be made. Not not happy about that, but I know that when I put my head to to my pillow at night, that I've exhausted every possible question. I don't think the council has ever had a 13-hour budget hearing. But we we did this time. That time and this one, we tried to have a shorter one and it lasted nine hours. I do believe that we we exhausted as much as we could. I know Council 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 President was adamant that this is going to be shorter and she was right. It was shorter. It was only three hours shorter. With respect to, you know, the funding for teachers and their spending out of their own money, I am a huge labor supporter, so I understand and I agree with you. However, the school budget is separate from the municipal budget and that is something that should be addressed with the Board of Education members, including the diversity that has increased and the teachers not being reflective or the staff not being reflective of the increased diversity in in the school district that is also being addressed by our superintendent, Cascon, and all of the schools that have created their diversity committees. So I'm happy that that is a discussion that is happening. Ms. Morelli, congratulations on the on the scheduled striping for tomorrow, I believe it was said, and the classes that will now be had to learn all the insights of pickleball. I have no idea what that is, to be honest with you. I might be a cultural thing for me, but just don't know what it is. But maybe I'll stop by one of these days and you can show me. Ms. Warta, the same, thank you for your comments. And I was smiling and and I'll have to say that I know that you were distracted and you lost your train of thought, but kudos to you for being so invested in our township that you interrupt your parenting time. You know, being a mom is is incredibly challenging, as many of us know, and trying to juggle everything is sometimes stressful and absolutely distracting. But I certainly appreciate you taking the time to do so. Again, that that is something that Washington, the Board of Ed, would have to adjust within their own budget. Mr. Paul, 20 Side, Sunnyside Avenue, you're right in the thick of things. I am so sorry. But we will continue to have this discussion and and hopefully we will be able to come to an understanding of what is happening at Crestmont as well as. Ms. Sherman, you had the same comments with respect to your concerns of traffic. I can't imagine what that would be. I live on on a circle and that's like putting a thoroughfare through my circle. I think I'd be very, very upset and and certainly as concerned as you are. I think that was it. Mr. Puglisi, thank you for the information on the rental assistance program that is so very necessary. I do want to go back to the comments that were made with respect to and and thank you, Councilman Corvick, for your confirmation. And for those who want your own confirmation, if you go on elec, e l e c dot N J dot gov, that's where you see where every candidate that has had a campaign has received donations. You can see who has donated to me, what they've donated, my expenditures, what I use that money for. That's all public information, so I'm sure everyone can. Should you want to see what that is, the candidate committee filing forms, reports are all there for you. So I'm sure that's where Councilman Corvick was able to confirm the receipt. Some time ago, I did bring to the my council colleagues' attention two ordinances that I propose to help ref-. two ordinances that I propose to help reform the finance election laws. While the state has their own and, you know, for me, I think that they're they're fairly fluid, if you will. There is a limit on $2, $2,600 for individual contracts, individual donors. However, I think that it is necessary for us to reform, and we're able to legally do so, our pay-to-play ordinances, if you will. I, I think that it's necessary to be able to to limit or exclude those who give political contributions to any elected official in their campaign because it, it, it does present, you know, while it may not be true and we mean, we may not like the allegation or the assumption and are offended by it. It does lend itself to the appearance of a potential conflict. And, you know, I, I want to work on continuing to increase the trust, the public trust in government so that we can continue to be engaged and be more effective. But I think that these contributions that are given to candidates and then eventually contracts are given, it does undermine the public confidence in any, any, any government, be it local or state or federal. That is, I'm hopeful for a discussion on that again. It was not something that was supported. I know the mayor is not supportive of that. He gave his reasons why in an email to council when I sent this ordinance to council months ago. But perhaps we should discuss this again with respect to, and I know Councilman Verino mentioned the Fairview. I, and, and the, the information that was put out there on, on Facebook. I did put a post on my social media page, my, my council page because unlike the NJEA, who has contributed by mailer or, or funds to campaigns here in town before, I believe they do so because they are a teacher, it's a teacher union, and those teachers are vested in the best education and quality for our students because it helps build better communities. Very different than Fairview Insurance Company, whose only stake here is profit. So if, 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 you know, whether or not it was sought, whether or not it was accepted, you know, I do agree that there shouldn't be a situation where anyone who accepts donations from any contract or potential contract should vote on them. I think that they should be recused. I think it does present the potential of a conflict of interest. And that's not to say or allege one way or the other. It's just the appearance is there. And I think if we can avoid the appearance, it should be avoided in the best interest of the township and the residents for trust building. I, I don't think that this is a matter to be expected simply because it is campaign season. This is something that I brought up when I created these ordinances months ago, prior to campaign season. Because again, I really do want us to work towards building trust in our government. And that starts with us. So I think that I have addressed everyone and look forward to the discussions on, on the agenda items that some of you have brought up. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Are you muted, Councilwoman?
I am, thank you. Buried under my notes. Let me just start with a couple of thank yous before we get into the overarching conversation on Crestmont. I wanted to thank Bill and Edwin from the Recreation Department for continuing with the fun and family-friendly events that the Recreation Department always puts out this year and particularly this year during a pandemic. So thank you, gentlemen, for that. Oh, thank you, Till Alfia, for bringing that 280 entrance to our attention. I wasn't really sure what you were going to say about Whittingham because the houses along Whittingham, there has been so much in painting and landscaping and even now with Halloween decorations that the street looks very lovely. And as my colleague mentioned, even the potholes are filled in. So the 280 entrance, it is state-controlled. But I will say that a few years back, I do remember the westbound 280 was closed for a cleanup. So hoping with the administration, we can do the same on eastbound. Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Shawna Green also about Watchong. When I first heard of Watchong, I was thinking of the orange end, actually, with, I know that they just did curbing and street improvements on the Park Avenue side. And as you continue to speak and voice your concern about the parking and the, and the noise, I do hope, I know that Jack, our business administrator, took notes on that and hopefully that can be addressed. I wanted to say, I'm not sure what to say to Shilpa Manikar because we spent two hours on the phone, on an empathetic phone call about our budget. A lot, a lot was discussed during that conversation. And this year, though, we did not approve raises for many of the recommendations that were made. We stayed below our 2% cap. And again, during a pandemic, it's a very, very difficult budget. Wanted to say thank you to Melinda Lee also, because I know she was also on the call. We spoke about this last Sunday at the historical marker for Anthony Thompson on the Washington Street corner there about the walkability study that she also attended. And the one question that we had asked, I had asked, was about the New Jersey TPA Transportation Planning Authority, if they had funding for all the recommendations they were made. And I did hear my colleague, Mr. Councilman Verino, talk about the application for funding has been, is being worked on. I think it is due in November and hopefully, to me, regardless if it's the Board of Ed or the township, if those improvements are there to make for a safety, safer environment, I would like to see that funding go toward that. Wanted to also say thank you to Anthony Puglisi. Always thank you for the continuing food distribution, how many months now of COVID. Thank you for the COVID assistance for renters. It's part of the conversation many people are having. And with so many people at home doing home improvements and recycling on such an uptick, thank you for the continuing with the hazardous waste and recycling program. Interestingly, with Ms. Hannah Monk, I had that topic on our pending matters. So as my council colleague said, we can look at ordinances if you do send that to us, we will look at that. And I will reach out to our environmental commission members and also to the Association of New Jersey for Environmental Commissions, and Jack, to see if they have any model ordinances that we can review. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And thanks to Joe Fagan too for information, unfortunately, about the mail, but thank you that that was resolved. Wanted to say thank you to Lenny Laporte, who are engineer, because he does come to our environmental commission meetings. And there is so much talk about trees this evening, not just with Crestmont, but with our ordinance. And I know that they are continuing to look at how to protect trees the best they can and creative design when they are doing these street improvements. So I wanted to thank Lenny for the comments that he made on that topic. And again, so now really thank you to everyone that reached out to the council last count. We are up to about 50 emails from residents. We should clarify that this Crestmont conceptual plan was not town-generated. So that's why my colleagues are saying that we were not aware of this. It was brought to our attention. Apparently, the proposed developer did do this, send this mailing to the people in the 200-foot radius. They have this conceptual plan here and a few residents, it does seem that anyone and everyone involved should have been notified, not just in 200-foot radius. I think the mayor, I did speak to the mayor about this and I thanked him for reaching out and postponing this because it was such short notice, no one really knew about it. And he did, my husband happens to be the Chair of Open Space, he's been on the phone for two days. There was a comment from Sally Malanga, yes, the, on the bus tour last year, well, the open space, we had the land conservancy principal on the tour. This is not on the open space registry because it is not preserved as part of the golf course. That was one of the comments that Mr. Draper Scott made also. So it is not in our best master plan, but all golf courses are zoned R1. So any houses that are proposed, they are on one acre lots. That doesn't even look like what they're proposing here. And it, if this says not, there is no pen, everyone has to understand there is no pending application before planning or zoning. This was conceptual plan that was put out there. And I really appreciate everyone coming out and the mayor coming out to postpone any movement until there is a discussion. He did, mayor did call my husband again as Chair of the Open Space Commission to attend these meetings so that more information can be, more information and more concerns can be addressed. Having, sitting on the planning board, couple of comments that were made. Because this is just a conceptual plan, there are no elevation scales on here. There is no tree removal or tree replacement. There's really nothing here to go on except this, the number of units that are being proposed. So there's been so much pushback. It'll be interesting how those discussions, how those discussions go. So there is a public process. That's for Mr. Stephen Ferry made the comment about public process, if and when this comes before zoning, that would be time for anyone to voice their opinion there during the public, public hearings. Mr. Zuckerman, the Yankees won last night. Let's hope they do the same tonight. You know, you did mention about it being a silent majority, but we do always hear from the silent majority. We are always accessible. We get phone calls and emails, just like we received all of this information this evening on Crestmont. We just, the planning board is very conscientious about environmental concerns on any application. And this, again, not seeing this, not knowing what the elevations are and steep slopes that are involved, the flooding issues, the traffic, everything that was raised this evening would definitely have to be taken into consideration. So many notes. I think that just really wraps it up because there really isn't anything for us to review or to look at. We'd have to wait for the mayor to come back. Open Space does have a meeting tomorrow evening. I don't know when the mayor was planning on having this discussion with Crestmont. So I, I was happy to hear that Open Space would be involved in that to see what potentially can be done. I, again, as the Chair of Open Space, we share an office here, as a Chair of Open Space, I do know that he did get the records of how much funding the Open Space does have. You know, there was talk about if this is something that we can purchase, but I wouldn't want to, I would like to look at a different way to preserve this because if green acres fundings comes out, our priority right now would be for Rock Spring Country Club and recoup, presenting a plan for Rock Spring to recruit the $588,000 in tax revenue that be lost over there. So there is a lot to discuss. And the fact that the mayor came out and did say that he was going to postpone this, I would expect that he would do the same, share any information about a discussion with us. Yes, we'll talk about the resolutions that people had question on this evening. And really, again, thank you, everyone, for sharing this information with us and bringing us to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A couple of things. Ms. Green, thank you for bringing your situation on One Chalk Avenue to us. I had already, we had spoke to Mr. Sarris earlier and I had also, as you were speaking, texted the, the police chief because we are, you know, always concerned that area of town, Island Lake Lord's section of town, where we do have overnight parking. And it does get frustrating when people block your driveways or park up to the stop signs. It's, it's very, very frustrating. And as far as noise concerns, our homes are closer together. And it, you know, we hear noise easier. So I know how frustrating it could be if had some neighbors over the summer have some complaints too. And all I keep saying is, is to keep calling our, our desk, but at the same token, it gets frustrating if we don't get the issue resolved. And we need to get your issue resolved. It's a quality of life issue and you shouldn't have to be, you know, stressing over it. So we'll, we'll work on that. I know we've worked in different areas of the area. I know the one-way streets, we thought was an alternative, but this doesn't sound like that's the issue here. It sounds like multiple people parking. I know with COVID happening, more people are home and more people are having, I guess, guests, which they, they do need to be careful with. But again, we will look into it because it is a big quality of life issue. Ms. Melinda, Ms. Huerta, thank you for coming in. I know how hard it is with the small children and, but I appreciate you voicing your concerns. Mr. Siggy, he, the facilities director over at the school board. I know I've had discussions with him in years past about that wall. The school board did make repairs to the back wall. Last year, they budgeted for it, so it is their responsibility. And he does have a five-year facilities plan and which this is probably part of. So you need to discuss it with the school, with the school board members on that. In regards to Shilpa, thank you so much. I, I know it's frustrating. We're taxpayers and it gets frustrating when you sit where we sit and you see a bunch of state mandates. My colleague, Councilwoman Too Brown, you know, beautifully articulated, you know, some of our challenges. I just wanted to add, other than salary pensions and benefits, it's, it's good for the library, but we had to increase contributions because there says value increased, it says values increased in the township. And that's how we budget them. So that's not an item that we could control. The Joint Sewerage Commission hasn't decreased through the years with all these bad rainstorms. A lot of work that has been done with them and the surrounding communities that were in, that we are in the joint venture with, that again, another mandated cost that we had no control over. And these costs are way over our 2% cap. We stayed at 1.75 this year. But again, we have to balance our facility repairs, training for staff, equipment needs, vehicle needs, staying on schedules. And of course, tonight, we have a large item for road repairs. So there's a lot of balls we have to juggle and we have to balance to make sure that the township runs efficiently and the necessary repairs are, are made. So it's always a challenge and we spent a lot of time this year alone. We thought we were earlier evening, nine hours and plus additional two other budget workshops that ran for a couple more hours, just picking away. And not to mention, all the, all the hours each of us individually tortured Mr. Gross in, in looking for some funding. But in regards to COVID, we haven't spent money in the budget. Mr. Gross has been very frugal with the funds. We, you know, there's a lot of town events that we didn't have this year. So we, hopefully, we won't have a big. So we, hopefully we won't have a big budget gap by the end of the year because COVID, we are. Is, is serious. Sorry about your family losses and so many losses in the town. It's been so heartbreaking. I, you know, we for a while in the beginning of the council meeting, since the virus hit, we were. Having candlelight vigils for residents and I'm, I'm glad to see the mayor, the reports come in. That we haven't had any additional deaths recently and God willing, we won't have any more. From this horrible virus. So it's, it's been a tough time. It's been a long seven months with this virus. And, you know, Mr. Gross has been great with the CARES Act money. Were able to utilize that. And he could explain later, we have an additional ordinance to resolution tonight. But, you know, we're, we're trying to do. You know, the best we can in providing PPE for our staff. Keeping everyone safe and let's not forget our small business owners who are hurt and really, really bad. And we, we've been trying to help them, assist them, our restaurant owners, our. Fitness centers, you know, trying to help them out and utilizing our recreation facilities for them. So with that being said. You know, we'll, you know, we just, we just keep trying to. View our finances and move forward. In regard to the school and school supplies, you know, that, that's, you know, teachers are budgeted for that. But they do, I give them credit. They go above and beyond and pay for extra supplies out of their own pockets. I was always amazed by so many. Teachers that do that for students. Also this year, our OEM coordinator, Nick Gallagher, did a phenomenal job providing over 200 families in the township. With from the CARES Act with wifi. So students could go online. So these have been very challenging times and, and you know, we'll keep moving forward. As far as the school district itself, again, I've been hearing things and rumblings. I mean. If you go to niche.com, I know our schools have been getting great ratings. As crazy as these, but these challenging financial times are. There has been housing demand here in the township from people moving here from other areas. And bidding wars and talking to new residents and knocking on doors. I always ask why people want to move to the township. And many of them are coming for our schools. They feel our schools are solid. They've done their homework and a lot of them come here for the West Orange School System. So we're very, very. Proud of our school district and where, you know, things aren't always perfect. We look forward to our school board members making them better. In regards to. Who else did I miss? Okay, the ordinance I'll discuss when we get there. Again, all the folks that came in from the talk about Crestmont. And the dangers of that potential development. Thank you so much for coming in and voicing your concerns. Because hopefully, you know, one of the developers is on the phone call and sees that it's going to be challenged. And I appreciate the mayor reaching out. It's, it's, that's what our mayor is supposed to do. Our mayor is supposed to. Go there and intervene when he sees a potential harm to the community. So we look forward to any community meeting and we always make sure we have a community meeting. In a week or two, we'll be having a community meeting for Rock Spring. As soon as we get some more information together for those residents and we're going to do the same here. I remember when West Essex Highlands got developed and my friends on Estrow and Mayfair were flooded out. And we don't want that to happen to the developments that underlined the ridge at Crestmont. So we will, you know, we will stand with you and we will, you know, fight with you. And I don't see there being an issue. Regarding contributions, I have not received any contributions from Crestmont Club. As far as the mayor's contribution, I can't speak to that, but I, I don't see. You know, why the, you know, innuendos again, which is disappointing, but it is election season. Pack mailings disturb me more than anybody, especially when somebody puts my face on it off my website. And if I find out that one of our vendors was involved and didn't have my permission, yeah, I will abstain from a contract. But again, I, we have to, I'm looking to investigate that because the way these work is people make contributions and. It's, it's just crazy. I, that's not for me. I've always prided myself on a lot of my. My, the residents mailing me $25. I get a lot of contributions from residents for $25, $100 and. I'm very proud of that, that I have a very good, strong base of residential support. And, you know, again, I, I was willing to talk about the ordinance. But I also want to talk about special interest group contribution. Union contributions and whatnot. So when we have the conversation, we need to mention all these other entities. And I will always look forward to a healthy debate with my colleagues. In regards to the tree ordinance. Is it perfect? No. Is it a long way from perfect? It's bound enforcement. And mainly we need to. The amendment that we wanted to get done is to register the tree companies. Cause that seems to be a big issue. A lot of these tree companies are coming in the township. They don't have, I, I can't speak to some of the staffing from the stories I hear. Doesn't, doesn't sound great for some of their, their, their workers that work for them, but. We need to get them registered and then we could have better control over with enforcement. But we are in desperate need of enforcement and. Mr. Lapore gave us some insight and again, we could go deeper conversation on the resolution. With that, last but not least, I am very excited that the police contract is on the agenda this evening. I, you know, working with the administration and with our, our union leadership, I'm very excited to. That they were, that both were able to work together to come to a conclusion. When you have negotiations, both sides aren't always happy. And that's when you know you have a good negotiation. So. We'll have that debate in a little bit. And before I close out, I neglected in my comments to. Give kudos to West Orange bravest or firefighters. To, it was almost two weeks now, there was a fire at the Degnan House. Thank God everyone was safe. Our fires fighters responded quickly. Took care of everybody, got them out safely. And, and I'm a salin already, salin already couldn't say enough. She was so thankful to them and, and all the residents where I talked to a few of the residents and. We want to thank our bravest and I'm glad they stayed safe as well. And with that, Madam Clerk, we will close out. Public comment. I thank everyone for speaking tonight. And if anything we didn't cover, just email us and we will follow up folks. So thank you so much. I know it's getting late and for hanging in there and hopefully we'll resolve a lot of these issues soon.
Hey, Madam Clerk.
Going to review the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, the public meeting and executive session of September 22nd, 2020.
Consent.
We, report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills? Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. So obviously we have quite a few that will, will pull off and I'll see if there's any more that need to be. I hear 183.
Council President, Mr. Gross is trying to get your attention.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Yeah, the, the administration is going to, wants to pull 183220.
Okay.
And, and just if I can just make a, a short comment about that.
Sure.
Absolutely do not believe that there's any. Use of facial recognition for identifying people on the street or anything involved in this. It is purely, it's a, it's a cooperative with the county and the state. To share information that, that they have with us for the most part. And having said that, we, we, we do not believe it is involved. With facial recognition for that type of activity. And we're asking, we're asking to, we're pulling it now just so we can go back and triple check that because we have no interest. In using facial recognition for those purposes. So we want to give the, you and the community the assurance to triple check this. Since, since the issue was raised.
All right, thank you. Cause I know the chief wasn't available tonight and I, I would have liked him to speak on this. So thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, we will also pull. If we want more discussion, 195-20. And 19620. And more discussion than. Being pulled and. 190, the contracts, 190. 198. Is there any other items that my colleagues would like, not questions, but pulled? Councilman Garino?
No, Council President.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Resolutions 186 and 187.
186, 187.
And I'd like to just consider them together just for efficiency sake.
Okay, no problem. Okay, Councilwoman, is that it? Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you, Council President. You told them already.
Okay, and Councilwoman McCartney? Did you want anything else pulled?
Questions right now and nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so before we move the consent agenda. I'm going to ask if anyone has any questions. I just want, is Mr. Johnson still there? Do we still have him?
I guess he is still on the call.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, why don't you go over with us 193 very quickly? The purchase of the playground equipment and servicing. What, our resolution 193 tonight and let the public know.
Yeah, we're, that's our work for, to renovate the playground at Degnan Park. So we're going to put a new apparatus in there, new structures in there. We're also going to. Convert the servicing to a port and place surface, which is a much better service for playgrounds in terms of maintenance, safety and just general lifespan.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Johnson about this project? Okay. I just want to add, if you haven't had a chance for my colleagues, if you could. Go visit the special needs park up at O'Connor Park. What a beautiful job our recreation department did. With that installation and we thank Mr. Charles and the, and our special needs committee with that group. What a beautiful job and, and just that same, it's going to be the same material, correct, Mr. Johnson?
That is correct. Yeah. So it's, you know, similar to O'Connor Park. It's accessible. So it's going to be a great addition to the playground there.
Yeah, I was up there this weekend and many people were enjoying it. So, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, also, let's see. Have we done, any of my colleagues have any questions on any of the other items? Councilman Garino?
No, I don't. Thank you, Council President.
Council, Councilman Kokoviac?
None for me.
Councilwoman Two Brown?
Yeah, actually, thank you. And so resolution 185-20, it's the. Township's interest in awarding contract for affordable housing, planning and consulting services to implement the fair share housing and related settlements. Settlement matters. So my question, my question. Is first, is this settlement. Really, the fair share housing settlement directly related to the West Essex Highland Settlement? And if Mr. Gross is on, maybe he can answer.
This, this resolution. Is, is the basis by which we will be in compliance with, with the fair share settlement. It, you know, the, the actual state or our, our state requirements to meet our housing obligations. Is it an offshoot of the, of the litigation in the sense that it will impact? It doesn't, the, the agreement impacts how we have to manage. That type of development and we will, we, we have to hire a firm in order to, to do everything that's appropriate with that. In accordance with our agreement. So this particular resolution allows us to go out and. And, and request proposals from various groups. And rate them. Based on the proposals as to who we would recommend actually awarding a contract to. It's not as simple as a simple bid because they'll be. We will have to pay whatever rendered is very, a very small amount. But the actual amount, because they're going to be able to charge property owners and tenants. That's the more competitive area. So in order to gauge that. We really need to use what the concept called. Sorry.
What is it, contracting?
Competitive contracting.
Yeah, I got lost in the word, competitive contract. And, and, and that's a competitive, I mean, process. It's, you know, there's, there's full ratings. And, and, and scoring and the scores are what they are. So it, it's a competitive process. We use it in a number of areas. This resolution requires a resolution to the governing body. That says, yes, you can use that methodology for this award, for an award. Tonight, this, all this does is give you permission.
Okay, I, I just, I was a little confused because I didn't know if this was, you know, and thinking of Shirley Bishop's. Contract with the township of that was not the same. If it was not under her umbrella or under her area of expertise.
Yeah, no, this is not a consulting contract. This is a, this, they're actually going to manage. The, the township's responsibilities under the fair share housing agreement. And, and, and it's all going to be paid for out of the, the housing money that we raise from developers. And, and others. You know, on, on a yearly basis, we raised about a half a million dollars. So. Our share of this, which is going to be a very small amount of money. Will, will come from. Those, that fund, so it won't come from the taxpayers. And then the actual users, the owner, the, the owners of the properties that got the benefit of. Of, of, I guess the, whatever density relief they got in order in exchange for their, for the affordable housing. Are going to be responsible to pay the, the lion's share of the costs.
Okay. And just because I mentioned Shirley Bishop, can you just clarify for the public who's listening, what her position with the. What services she provides township?
Yeah, she's a professional consultant that basically advises us on. How to proceed. She's an expert in the field. She was the executive director of the program for the state for. I don't know, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guess the number of years because she'll get mad at me for. Number of them, but it's a lot. And she, she, after she retired. She, she started doing consulting for towns and we're very fortunate to have had her. She is, is the predominant expert in the field in New Jersey. And again, she advises us on how to proceed. It's up to the township. Due to decide how to proceed. She does the, she gives us the benefit of her expertise.
Thank, thank you for all of that information, Mr. Gross. That, that's all the questions that I had. Council President, the other matters are up for discussion. In the pulled items, are, are we going to be discussing? I was going to ask Mr. Gross for the public's benefit to also just give an overview of resolution 192-20. With respect to receiving CARES Act funding from the county, please?
Yes, your, your call back in, in the summertime. We had a similar resolution, almost identical. For about $2.2 million of a grant that. Were about 2.2 million dollars of a grant that was apportioned to us. It was awarded to the county, and the county apportioned to us 2.2 million. They've now looked at their situation and agreed to apportion another tranche to us, and that's what this represents. We've, we've submitted more than 2.2 million dollars of potential expenses for reimbursement to the county. We're waiting for final word on those reimbursements. This 1.2 that you see here is intended to cover us through the end of the year. That may or may not be the case, as you're probably all aware. There, there's, is hope, still continues to be hope, that the federal government will do something to help municipalities. Because one of the things this, this does not do is does not help us on the revenue side. It only, only helps us on the expenditure side. No, so we're, there's still hope that the, the feds will come up with some type of a plan. But as of today, the president indicated that there won't be anything before the election.
Yes, thank you, Council President, thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
I do not have any more questions. I had this, I spoke to John earlier today and to Mr. Keno, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, we have the items that we're pulling for conversation's sake. What I think I would like to do is, if, just to relieve Mr. Lapore from the call. Mr. Lapore, if you would like to address for us 195-20 again.
Council President.
Should I move the consent agenda before you do that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm so sorry, before we, we move, 188 Resolution for Executive Session. Is that, are we going into executive session?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that has to.
That's part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so, I have a, one motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Okay, great. All right, so, Mr. Lapore, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just real quick, I know we had Mr. Johnson on the call. I don't see anything else here related to recreation, just double checking. So, I just wanted to let him know if he wanted to get off the call. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for all your input this evening. Okay, Mr. Lapore, so, 195, again, to talk about these, you know, just go over for me, because I know you went to a few, you had a few conversations with some residents in regards to these projects. And, and I just want you just to reiterate that just one more time and see if my colleagues have any additional questions, so we could move forward with this resolution.
This is the second street improvement project that we're awarding this year. Actually, it's the third, Old Indian Road being one of them, and two, another street resurfacing project. As with all our street improvement projects, there's a potential for street removal, excuse me, tree removal. We do have items in here to pay for those tree removal. There's nothing set of any specific tree for this project. We will walk all the streets, our forester, our inspector and me will walk the street, will identify trees that may be hazardous, that should come down, whether or not we're doing any street improvements. Then, we're going to look at other trees to see how, if we can make street improvements, such as curb replacement, fix sidewalks next to those trees. Do the trees have to come down? What can we do in lieu of taking the tree down? And then, we discuss all those aspects with the property owner along the frontage where that tree is. So, it's something that, that we've been doing for a number of years. We hear those who are trying to protect our canopy. We also hear from those residents who are living with some of the problems of trying to make improvements to their property, but are really stifled by, by the trees themselves, such as roots, uplifting sidewalks, or pushing out curb stones.
Do any of my colleagues have any additional questions on this resolution from Mr. Lapore?
I do, Council President, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Good evening, Mr. Lapore, hope you're well.
Good evening.
A quick question, when looking at this project and this reconstruction of the roadway, has, has anything been taken into consideration to maybe realign it? That would put less impact on a need to, to do the trees?
Well, in this, in this particular project, Councilman Magrino, these are, these are all existing streets. These are all existing streets with curb. Some of them do have sidewalk. If, if you're going to start real lining streets, you may be making them narrower. You may be pushing a road to one side to save a tree on, on another. Again, we're not necessarily trying to, to take trees down for the sake of taking them down. We also do have planting programs, and some, there can be planting done with this tree or with this project if we have to remove any trees. So, I think in this particular case, it, it's not a matter of alignment. These are, these are all streets that I would call improved already with curb. Some of them perhaps 60, 70 years ago, and the useful life of, of that improvement has since passed, and we're reinvesting in, in the improvement to make those streets more appealing to everybody who visits them and uses them.
Right, so, my other question would be, Mr. Lapore, and this is, this is like I'm saying, is, is there any way, I mean, you know, you're redoing the streets, you're, you're putting in new curbing, you're putting in new sidewalks, and is the impetus for tree removal, what's causing the trees to be removed, other than disease? Isn't that because we're putting new sidewalks in?
It could be, it's going to be almost impossible to preserve a tree and put in new curb and put in new sidewalk around it. In some cases, we can leave the curb, and that will help in, in saving that tree. So, there are a lot of, there are options. But, you know, we try to do that in, in consultation with the, with the homeowner.
Right, could have, well, then, to the point, just trying to make everybody, you know, is there a way of saying, okay, to save the tree? It's, it's a healthy living tree. And everybody's concerned about the canopy and about carbon, and then we, would, could we say, and would we say? And would the homeowner say, okay, well, to protect the tree and keep the tree, don't put in the sidewalk?
Yeah, it would be nothing.
I mean, not to, not to interrupt you, but you know, everybody, you know, keeps saying, we want all these sidewalks. And I, you know, can understand, but if we said to the homeowner, okay, when we're doing this road, to save the tree, which I'd rather save the trees, I tell you what, we're going to save your tree, you want that tree, we're going to take out the sidewalk and just put grass, and then, then we're okay. Is that a possibility?
Well, I, I think in many cases, putting grasses wouldn't be a possibility. We may just want to, you know, leave the sidewalk the way it is, or perhaps look at some other improvements to the sidewalk that may be a little bit easier to make, a little bit more flexible, may not require root cutting. So, there, there are different options that we can take. I, I think first and foremost, we're always trying to provide safety for everybody, and if that can be achieved by, by keeping the tree, we'll keep the tree.
Okay, I mean, so, there are the options and those things you're still looking at to go for, before we even go forward with this project.
That, that, that's correct.
Okay, can I ask one last, no, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Lapore.
This is, this is a, while, while trees are important, this is not the majority situation that we have on our streets. So, we, we have a project that is, I think, upwards of two and a quarter miles of roadway. That's, you know, approximately 11,000, 12,000 feet. There's only a few hundred feet in combination where we, we have tree issues.
Okay, so, my, my last question would be, Mr. Lapore, you know, when you, when we talked about this before, you said there were not that many trees that would be in peril of coming down. That, you know, because in the beginning, some of the residents were saying, there's 46 trees that are coming down. So, where would these residents get this number of 46 trees that are coming down?
That, that means an estimate, put in the bid to put a quantity, so that we could get pricing. That, that's not meaning, you know, it doesn't mean that that's the number that will come down.
Okay, and how, like I said, if we were not like, if we were to hold back on approving this resolution tonight, I mean, for you to go out and really check these trees and, and give the homeowners an idea of the extent that the tree is healthy, if the tree is sick, do they want the tree down? I mean, and to, and to benefit the people who really appreciate trees throughout the township, no matter where they live, how long of a holdup would this put on the project?
Well, um, this is something that I really wouldn't necessarily expect to start to springtime. We, we are already, you know, a few weeks into fall. But we're, we're going to do that whether you decide not to make an award tonight, or e- even if you do make an award tonight, we're going to go out, look at every tree, meet with homeowners, and, and make them the decision based, based on, on that meeting.
Okay, who will be looking at the trees, Mr. Lapore?
Our foresters will be looking at the tree. I'll be with them, and so will our inspector.
Okay, and you, you'll report back to the council before any decisions are made? I mean.
I, I can do that, if that's your request.
Yeah, I would, I would like that, I would like to make that request, Mr. Lapore, of what the forester and the, the consultant sees and, and the inspector see, and what you see, you know, I trust your opinion, and, and, and whatever feedback we get from the homeowners, and what option, did you, did you give them an if then? If we don't take down the tree, well, we don't do your sidewalk. I mean, that's, you know, that's an easy one. So, if, that can be done, Mr. Lapore, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council President.
Well, Mr. Lapore, just to re-answer the question, so, so basically, you got a price for up to 46 trees? Not that you're taking out 46 trees, just up to, so if you just remove three trees, you're paying for three trees, it's just a pricing of up to 46 trees? Is that what you're articulating?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay, okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Council President, I know it, it seems at this point that you can't see me, but I would like to ask.
Oh, I apologize, Councilman, no, I can't, I only have, I could see three people at a time, because I have to keep the agenda on my screen. But go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Lapore, I think you've been really good about explaining how you're going to address the, the process of addressing these, these potential problem trees. But I wanted to see if I can throw them into different categories, so I can hone in on, on one or two specific categories. So, if you were going to do categories, the first category would be the trees that are diseased or that hazardous. You come across those, you gotta, you gotta take them down, right? That, that's, that's correct. Okay, and then there's, then there's the rest of the trees, which are, I would assume, if they're not hazardous and need to be taken down, they're healthy. Yes. Okay, so then, you've got to figure out, I think, two things. You've got to figure out what you're going to do to try to accommodate them and, and also get input from the homeowners. About what they, is that correct? Some of them may not even be an issue, they may be healthy, and nothing needs to be done. Okay, so, that's. We're going to stay. I, I want to focus on this, because I, I've heard that this happens before, where the homeowners want to take down healthy trees. And I think, I think the town gives them, these homeowners who want to take down the healthy trees, gives them some leeway, or give them extra input into the decision of what to do along that part of the, the property front. Is that, am I correct about that? Well, generally, we do not want to take down any, any healthy tree, e- even when the resident wants it removed. Okay, well, we're, we're perfectly on board here, but the question is, what happens if the homeowner comes out and says, I want that tree down? How do you decide what to do? Unless it's, in this particular case, when, when it's part of a road improvement, unless it needs to come down to, you know, absolutely needs to come down as part of the road improvement, we're, we're not going to take it down.
That's simple.
Right, now, that's a separate category, that's a, isn't that a separate category of a healthy tree that needs to come down, because you need to put in whatever, a sidewalk or, or curbing, that sort of thing? If, if there was absolutely no other choice.
When it comes down.
There, there may be situations where a homeowner has a tree that's healthy, but is, is just absolutely ruining the, the front of their property, and we can't really, we can't make the curb improvements or fix the sidewalk around the tree without the tree being removed. If, if that homeowner were to consent to the tree being removed, we would, we would remove it. I, I, we're trying not to dangle the improvement in front of them, but, but that's part of the, the reality. We're not trying to say, oh, by the way, if you let us take the tree down, we'll fix your sidewalk. I, I, I'm not trying to dangle that there's some benefit to them if they allow us to take the tree down. It's, it's something mutual that, that we need to arrive at as to why the tree would be removed. Okay, and do you have to do that, because the law says that you need the homeowner's consent to do something on the tree lawn, which my understanding is that that belongs to the municipality? That, that, that's, that's correct, we, we don't. But we, we don't want to not involve those who either benefit from the tree, the beauty of the tree, or others who may think that the tree is a detriment to them enjoying their property. So, yes, we, we can unilaterally decide, but that's not the, the practice that we want to take in this town.
Good answer.
Right, and, and I would agree with you to the extent that if, if it's our prerogative, it, it doesn't matter if the property owner wants to take down a healthy tree. Right, legally. Well, I, there, if a homeowner wants to take down a healthy tree, I, I don't, it, it's not our desire to necessarily support that, unless there's a compelling reason associated with the project, why, why that would be done. Right, I, I understand, and, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to box you in. I'm trying to figure out if we need, if, if we need to modify the tree protection ordinance to, to give more guidance in that sort of gray area. That's all, that's really all I'm looking for, and I. Stand that.
There may be something.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I, I really want to focus on just this resolution, and we can talk about that later, because we have an attorney that needs to come on for an ABC hearing. So, if you, you know, just stick to this resolution, please, and we could discuss amendment later on.
Right, Mr. Lapore, I, I, I'll just leave it here, and we'll pick up at some other more. I understand your point, and I think that's a good one, it's something we should look at. Thank you.
Great, that's a great point, Councilman, thank you. Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
The President, if I, if I could just.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And just for the benefit of the public as well, and I did have something to share. When there was the concern with the Old Indian Road tree, I, I did meet Mr. Lapore and our forester and our, the homeowner at her residence, and the discussion ensued, and it was agreed that she was going to retain an expert for that tree, and there, there certainly was a willingness from the township to do what they could to preserve, or this, this particular tree would not be preserved, but it would, its life would be extended, if you will, because of the, the issues the tree was having. Ms. Pierre did want to do what she could to, to preserve that canopy, because there were some other trees that had been removed. I, I'm sharing that to share that there were other alternatives that were also discussed while we were there, whether or not. um, whether or not we can go, um, and extend the road towards the right side. Um, that discussion was had, and in looking at that option, we would be taking more trees down than just the one. Um, a- and I wanted to just share that to say that the conversations do happen. I don't know if they're happening with everyone in the neighborhood as far as these, um, this project is, um, planned, but I, I, I hope that, that they would. My experience in this last, um, interaction was that that conversation was had. It was taken seriously, the concern, and there were, um, options that were made available. And so I'm hopeful that that is, you know, continued practice with the rest of, um, this street phase projects. Um, project, project street improvements, twenty twenty.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, any, um, Councilwoman McCartney, you're good?
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like a motion, uh, to approve one ninety-five dash twenty. Do I have a second? And I'll second it.
Okay, Councilman Garino.
Uh, I'd like to, I mean, I, I, I wish we could just put this off, you know, until we get a study of the trees, and then everybody will be comfortable. So.
There's a motion on the floor.
I know, I know, I know, I'm sorry, um.
So, so, so just, uh, Councilman, I thought I'd get a big discussion.
No, okay, I, I, at this point in time, I'd like to see more information on the trees, so I'll vote no.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
And then you will provide us the number of trees.
What, I'm sorry, I missed that. Was that a yes?
I voted yes, but I, I do want Lenny to provide the number of trees, um, after you review the improvement.
Okay, Council President Castellino?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes too, because it's up to that amount. That doesn't mean they're going for that amount. It's just up to, and each case will be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, realizing now, did anybody else want one ninety-six pulled? I thi- I think I just want to, Mr. Laporte, to say something. I, I said pulled, which is my error. Um, so just real quick, Mr. Laporte, if you could just go over one ninety-six, what you're doing at the garage, and then we'll let you get off the call.
Yeah, this is actually the, the old Public Works Garage, the old Board of Education, uh, bus garage on, on Lindley Avenue, uh, near the municipal building. It, it's ongoing slight remediation uh, from underground storage tanks, which are no longer in the ground, but they had previously leaked, when it was used as a garage for both DPW and the Board of Education.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Laporte? Have a motion to approve one ninety-six dash twenty? Oh, go ahead, Councilman.
I had a question. Mr. Laporte, is any funding from EPA available to cover the cost for this project?
No, it's, it's not designated as, as a brown's field, uh, or a brown field, so there, there, there isn't.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Laporte. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, you're, you're welcome, um.
Any, 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 um, end in sight?
Um, I, I think we're, we're getting very close to the end. Um, unfortunately, I have felt that before. Um, that was, uh, shortly after that, some of the regulations changed, so, uh, that prolonged this. So, uh, I, I think we're getting near the end here with this.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one ninety-six dash twenty.
I second.
Second.
Okay.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ms. Laporte, uh, for being available this evening. We appreciate it. I know I'm batting out of order, so I'm gonna go back to items one eighty-six uh, dash twenty and one eighty-seven dash twenty. Councilman Krokoviac, you pulled these two?
Yes.
You have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this, this appears to be, uh, Mr. Gross as a reference point. So I just wanted to get some more information, uh, about the, uh, the background on this. We're, um, using to sort of consolidate a previously existing position, uh, into a, a part-time situation. And it looks like that's gonna save a lot of money, uh, but I just wanted to get some numbers, uh, associated with this. There's some, so for example, one eighty-six dash twenty, there's the resolution appointing a recycling coordinator, uh, but it doesn't say, uh, it, it doesn't say how much money he compensation, and it doesn't say the, uh, I guess the number of hours or what the responsibilities are. So I just was trying to get that.
The, the, Councilman, the, uh, previous holder of these two positions, uh, was, was paid a stipend, uh, five thousand for one and two thousand for the other. Um, that stipend is still the, it's the same amount for this. We're just moving it from the person who retired uh, to another person within our organization, uh, in the, in the Health Department, who will do a great job, uh, and, uh, uh, has, has been working with this for quite a while anyway, so it's, it's appropriate for it to go there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what his experience was for these two positions. It sounds like you're familiar with that. Could you just tell me a little bit about, uh, what, what Mr. Fonzino has, has in terms of, uh, experience in these two areas?
Well, well, the, the Health Department and Mr. Fonzino, uh, work, work hand-in-hand with, with the recycler, uh, and is in, involved in, in, on a day-to-day, and has been for a number of years. Um, so this is just a, an extension of the work that they've been doing in that department, and particularly for, for Mike since then. The, um, uh, the, the, uh, the other grant, um, is, again, it's kind of nondescript. It has to do with, in some ways, it's part, recycling's part of it, and just general neighborhood cleanup. Again, the Health Department is involved with, with the refuse pickup, uh, person, so it's, it's, it's a Nash, a, a natural offshoot at this point for them to go there. There, there's, the, the stipend is the same as it was before. I think your, your, uh, presumption about saving a lot of money goes back to whether the full-time position is gonna be replaced, and I don't have an answer for you on that right now.
Okay, and approximately how many hours a week are these two positions, do these two positions require?
Well, they, it's always been, um, a, a, on top of the, a regular full-time schedule. Um, so I don't, I don't think it's a lot of hours. Um, I do think, you know, in terms, it's not twenty hours or twenty-five hours a week, you know. I'd be surprised if it's more than five, although I'm sure there's some weeks when it's forty, you know, because of just the, the nature of, 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 uh, emergency cir- circumstances when, you know, uh, neighborhoods get, you know, come to our attention, that, that they're problematic. That there's, there's problems going on. So, but I, I think on an average, it's probably not a lot.
Okay, that, thank you. That, that's all I had. That's all.
Does anyone have a question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. John, this does make, um, a logical transition, excuse me, a logical transition because our solid weeks' contract does come out of the Health Department. For some reason, I mean, we do, I feel like I always associate it with Department of Public Works, which is where recycling coordinator retired from, and with the recycling center, that DPW is always there. So this does, this does make sense. Um, the question I have is, does that stipend come out of the New Jersey Clean Communities, um, tonnage report?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Council President, I had a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, the, the individual that is going to be filling, um, these responsibilities and duties, um, does this individual discuss among the raises during the budget season?
I'm sorry?
Was this an individual that was discussed during the budget season for the raises on special requests?
Yes.
Was the special request the same amount?
No.
No, it's less.
Was the special request about ten? I'm trying to, I'm trying to look as we're talking, um, because it, it did. Um, his name, the name sounded very familiar to me. Was it ten thousand? That was, that was the special request?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, and a question I have, um, Clean Communities Coordinator position. So is that training that he needs to do, or he already has that training?
Yeah, he's already, well, he's, he's signed. There, there is special training you have to get, uh, with these positions. He's already signed up for them. He starts one next week, uh, maybe even this week, uh, at the end, and that, that he'll have to do. And then there's another one that, apparently they're only offered annually, so it won't be till sometime next year. Uh, but that's not an issue because they have, they have a period of time to get the, the training.
And then, uh, is he available because of the stipend? Because I know sometimes the scout troops, they work directly with the scout troops, and he may need to come in on a weekend to work with them. Is he available to do that?
He understands that.
Okay. Okay.
The mental commission meetings too?
Huh?
I guess I'll have to ask about, um.
Go to the bottom, maybe, yes.
Yes.
And he'll have to work with the grant writer also?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, uh, Councilman Garino, did, did you want to weigh in? Are you good?
No, no, my question was asked, so.
Okay, great. I don't, I don't want to move forward without asking.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, uh, Councilmen had requested these get pulled together. Should, do we vote on them separate, each one or together?
Separate.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, do we have a motion for one eighty-six dash twenty for the recycling coordinator? Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Did you say no?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay. And one eighty-seven dash twenty, uh, resolution appointing a Clean Communities Coordinator. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, so we have one more resolution, which I'm gonna ask at this time. What time is it? Uh, we have an attorney that had requested to, to get him before midnight for, uh, ABC hearing. Mr. Kaiser? Do you want to get him on the call real quick, and we'll do his one item, and then go back to ABC?
He's here as an attendee.
Oh, he's already on the call?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yeah, we have him on the, he's an attendee right now.
Okay, great. Okay, then, what I'm gonna ask my colleagues to do is I wanna get a motion to go into ABC hearing and take care of this one matter because of the late hour and the, uh, because we have, uh, someone who needs to speak, and then go back to, um, the general meeting, take care of the rest of our business, and then we could come back to the ABC hearing after that.
Council President, I make a motion that the council go into ABC, adjourn the town council meeting, and to reconvene as the ABC board.
Reset.
Re- reset, what, reset, sorry, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, okay, so, um, we have one resolution left, one ninety-eight dash twenty. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Resolution Improving Memorandum of Agreement Between the Township PBA and SOA.
Okay, so as we all know, this has been a long time coming, almost three years. Um, the membership, um, the leader, the uni- uh, both, uh, union leadership has been working diligently with, with the mayor. Um, they had asked if they had a vote last night, if we would be able to accommodate them. I'm putting it on tonight's agenda. I did not take issue with that. Um, so we do need time to discuss it. That's why I wanted to wait to, this is the only thing we're to focus on. Uh, you received a copy of it today. I know not all of you had time to dissect it. Uh, before I read, I have a statement from the union leadership and from the mayor. Uh, but the first, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, to Mr. Gross to go over, uh, the details of this MOA.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this MOA is, um, structurally very similar to, uh, previous agreements that we've had, particularly with the, 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 the fire superiors. Um, it is a five-year contract. Uh, there is a, basically a nine percent increase in salary over that five years, uh, with an increase in the, um, the police stipend. Um, as also the, uh, new hires, it, police officers, uh, will not receive um, health benefits in retirement. Um, and in exchange for that concession, the, um, um, current police officers will, will not pay, um, a contribution to health benefits in retirement. They'll pay while they're working, but in retirement, like all other retirees. Um, in addition to that, new, the new employees will, the, as they retire, or, or, or as, when they're hired in, for retirement, um, will receive a, an additional sum, uh, representing eleven percent of, um, salary that will go into a four fifty-seven plan to save for them to pay for whatever costs they may have in the future, uh, health, health related or otherwise.
Okay, so, um, I also like Mr. Sares to jump in here, because I know he's been, I apologize, Mr. Sares, you've been a big part of these negotiations, uh, working, uh, with, with the mayor and, and Mr. Gross and our, and our leadership and the attorneys. So if you'd like to make a statement and walk us through this, that would be great.
I, I think, I think Mr. Gross explained it perfectly. Um, you know, uh, we, we may negotiate it with them so that they, so that their new employees will not, uh, be eligible for, uh, health benefits in retirement. That's a big, big cost for the township. Um, obviously, it's gonna take us time to, 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 uh, get a positive note on that because it depends on how many people are gonna be hiring over the next couple of years. But for the most part, uh, the mayor and I and Mr. Gross, and we sat down and we talked about this, and we felt that, um, as you know, this agreement's been going on for a very, very long time. And in the beginning, they really didn't even want to, the, the unions wanted nothing to do with us taking away the retirement benefits. They even actually filed for arbitration, and, um, over the last couple of weeks, myself and the mayor and Mr. Gross had sat down and came up with this, this, these different ideas, and, uh, they finally settled the contract with the mayor last week, and, uh, they voted on it and signed off on it, and now we just have to have it approved by the council.
Yeah, and the four fifty-seven plan is equivalent to a 401K with a different kind of structured tax implications. And the township, um, with the new employees will, uh, give a contribution as well. If my colleagues look at page three of the agreement, second paragraph down, and read through that language.
I think it's fair to say, um, you know, the, you, you always know when you get a good deal, when, when both sides are a little unhappy. I think we're, we're a little unhappy, and they're a little unhappy, and it's a sign of a good deal, I think. Um, I, I, I think that the mayor, uh, I think, and, and I can't help but mention it myself, um, that I, I think that, uh, even though it was a long and arduous process, um, when it came down to actually putting this together, um, the, the union leadership, uh, really, really performed and, and cooperated and, 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 and. really, really performed and cooperated and, 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 and did, took their actions in the best interest of their membership as well as be reasonable as to what the township's abilities were. So, for their professionalism in this.
And, and Mr. Sayers, can I ask too, and, and parts of the language as far as conditions with new language in here was direct input from the union leadership as well, correct?
Correct, and believe me, I don't know what Mr. Gross's position is, but I'm, I was, between us, I was a little shocked that they signed off on this, but they did. Uh, we think, we think based on with the language that we use and what we're doing, exactly what we're getting. We think this is probably a very good deal for the township.
And our cadets that are in the academy will be covered?
That's.
This, this starts for anybody hired thereafter.
That's correct.
After it's, after it's approved and signed. So that's all, we want to get it done as quickly as possible, get it, get it over with.
Okay, and I, I know that it was important for membership. If there was a death why they were high, why on active duty or not on active duty, but they, there was an unexpected death that their families would be covered. And that language is in here as well.
That's correct.
Yeah. That was important to them, which which was important. Do any of my colleagues, I'll start with Councilman Guarino. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask the administration?
No, I, I, I basically, I said, I'm really glad this has finally been settled for our first responders. It's, it's good and we're looking after them and I'm very happy and it's, it's a compliment. But all I'm saying is back and forth, and I mean, this is solved now, but back and forth, nobody ever brought the point. Everybody was throwing numbers around health benefits, what was more, what was less. But nobody ever brought from either side, a spreadsheet and analysis from the Department of Pensions and Benefits. And that's the only place that we'd ever going to get the right information. And you needed a spreadsheet by person, by type of insurance, by length of service, by salary. And it's the only way you would have known how much we would have saved or not saved by going to the state health plan. But I'm really glad we're looking after our police officers, our first responders. Because it's very critical they get and they're looked after and especially their families. God forbid something happened to them, you know, so this way their families are always maintained. So I, I'm really, really, really happy to see that this has been resolved. And that you did take into consideration the benefit of our, our first responders and our officers because they deserve it. And the residents deserve it as well too. So, but that's all I want to say, Council President. With all the stuff going back and forth over the years, the right way to look at everything was to go to the Division of Pensions and Benefits and ask them, and they would have done it. So you would have seen any savings or non-savings because you have to do it by personnel, by salary, by family decisions, non-family, single, partner, and single. That's the way it should have been done, but it wasn't, but I'm happy that.
Councilman, it wasn't done that way because the unions refused to go to the state health benefit plan. How many times I have to tell you that?
No, 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 I'm.
Contract, the contract says they're not going to the state health benefit plan and they refuse to go to the state health benefit plan. So we didn't waste our time in doing that.
No, Mr. Sayers, I'm.
Hey, everybody relax. It's been a long three years.
It's, it's not a criticism, Mr. Sayers. It's, it's, what I was trying to say is when everybody went back and forth and started talking about what it would cost and everything else, nobody, you know, they should have went and said, or I could have done it. And said to the Division of Pensions and Benefits, what will this plan cost if, if, I'm saying if, they did, nobody want, if the employees went to the state plan. And then you would have seen the true number. It's not a criticism of the administration, it's not a criticism of the police department. I'm only saying with all these three years and all the consents back and forth, nobody went to the right place. And that's all I'm saying. It's not a criticism of you, Mr. Sayers, or the mayor, or anybody, or the police union. I'm just happy it's settled and everybody's taken care of. That, that's all I'm saying, sir. Just making a comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And before, I, I just want to add something before I move over to, to my other colleagues. The 457 plan, deferral compensation plan will have to be agreed upon by both parties. As from what I could see, correct, Mr. Gross?
Well.
Or does a union pick which, which plan they want to go into?
No, no, we, we're.
It's agreed upon.
We have a, a current complement of 457 plans, which they can pick from. If we decided that we were going to make a change and eliminate one or, or actually there's two that they're interested in. That's something we would have to do in concert with the union, but that's, you know, you know, that's done on a competitive basis. We've, we went, we went out in 2012 and selected the three, the four companies that we have now. There's no requirement for that to be done on a regular basis. It's just when you do do it, you have to do it on a competitive basis. It's based on a list that the Division of Local Government Services maintains. They all have to be on that list. So there's a process. And, and, and basically we have to stay with that process. And, 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 and not move to eliminate at least two of the programs that the union feel is most beneficial to them. So.
And, and as far as this year's budget, you're already budgeted for this, these items to move forward?
We anticipate, we, we have anticipated within this budget sufficient funds to cover this settlement for the, for what we have to pay out this year.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Kokoviac, any questions?
Yes, thank you. You were just about to get to the, the whole issue of the financial impact. And I would like, I'd like to hear what the financial impact is going to be when this proposal over the five years.
Okay, Mr. Gross?
You're looking at, you're, you're looking at a nine percent increase in salaries over that period of time. And about a $2,800 in stipend for each officer over that time. So you have a rough numbers, you have a hundred. So these are all add two zeros to the end for the, for the totals for everybody.
So that's, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is what is going to be the financial impact on our budget going forward? Okay, so for example, this year in 2020, how much money are we going to put out as part of the initial first year of the settlement?
2020 is going to be a three percent, a three percent, so that's roughly $300,000. Plus, plus, an additional $1,000 for their stipend. So the approximately $400,000.
Okay, and then there's some other, there's some other pieces in here too. According to my quick reading of the proposed MOU. So it's not just stipend and it's not just the salary increases. Am I correct?
Well, there's the, there's the compensation for new hires, the additional compensation for new hires who are not going to be eligible for, for the benefits. And for those that are going to receive that, that's going to be about $33,000 to $44,000 a year increase.
For all of the hires?
Well, yeah, because you keep in mind, it, it's based on, over a 25 to 30 year period, you're going to have a hundred police officers who are going to retire over a period of time. So that's roughly three to four a year. So the impact of the 10% on those three to four is really only about a third of a percent to point four, five percent. So that's $33,000 to $44,000 a year.
So, so isn't that for each year? The $33,000 to $44,000?
If you hire them.
That per year, yes.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you've got salary increases of $300,000. You've got the stipend increases, which is, if I understood you correctly, is is it $100,000 or $10,000?
$100,000.
It's 400.
Then you're talking about anybody that, anybody else that we hire this year?
Well, we won't be, we won't be, we won't be hiring anybody else this year. But when you start to hire and assuming there's a, a normal attrition, it's going to be three to four people a year. So it's going to be approximately ballpark, this is average. It's actually probably less than that because in the beginning, but when you, you know, average it out over the, their entire life. It's, it's, well, one of about $33,000 to $44,000, $33,000 to $44,000 a year.
So if you look at the $1,000 increase in the stipend and these additional, the average of these additional that you're expecting. What we, what it appears to me that we have what, what we appear to have purchased with getting the unions to give up, I'm giving, give the police Officers Union to give up. Are you, are you giving us both contracts or just?
Both. Both.
Okay, so we're going to be paying roughly $130,000 to $144,000 a year in order to get these guys to give up the retirement benefits?
Now, the, the retirement benefits, we didn't talk about the.
Sorry, the retirement health benefits.
Yes.
You hires.
Yes. So, so that you have, you have the same, there's going to be a the same three to four people who retire a year, we're going to pick up their co-payment which is about $12,000. So you're talking another to the same, 33 to 44 is really going to be 66 to 88.
So it's closer to $200,000 a year for the next 20 or 30 years? That we've committed to somewhere around $6 million in additional costs in order to get rid of the
That's correct.
Healthcare costs for new hires?
Yes.
So we're going to pay $6 million and we're not going to get, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not going to get a penny of savings for like 20 or 30 years?
25.
30.
Between 25 and 30 depending on when they retire. But by then, first off, in today's dollars, you'll get that back the first year. You'll get that back in the first year, in today's dollars. And, and in, in future dollars, I mean, it's astronomical.
Yes, particularly if you figure some sort of.
Figure the three percent above inflation. Right? So, so whatever salary is going to go up, the cost of benefits is going to go three, at least three percent more. So that, that's a pretty conservative number. So when you, when you factor that in over 25 years, that's another 75% of, you know, by the time you compound it, it's close to 80 to 85%.
You should, you should have gave us that slide that you did for the budget hearing. You need to send that to us so we could look at it.
Well, you have it, right? We did that. So we can, we can provide that.
So, so what happens if in 10 years, something changes and we go to a single payer and, and all of this goes out the window that nobody's going to be providing healthcare benefits?
Benefits. I, I'm going to say something and I've said it before and some, some may, may disagree with me. But I do not believe, and a lot of people do not believe, that those that are paying for health benefits now are going to be given a free ride in the conversion. So that, you know, we're paying $14 million a year in health benefits. If, 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 if single payer comes in, they're, in my opinion, and a lot of people's opinion, there's no way that all of a sudden, we're not going to have to pay $14 million. There's no way that's all of a sudden, we're not going to have to pay half of that, $7 million. The federal government cannot, will not be able to afford to do anything by letting us off the hook of what we're paying already. So when single payer comes in, we want to be in the best situation that we can be. Because, but, but the likelihood of us getting any savings out of that, significant savings out of that is minimal. If, if, as far as I'm concerned, it's non-existent. So if you, on the other hand, if you believe that, that, that when single payer comes in, the federal government is going to, going to print the money and tell everybody that, that is now paying, all the businesses that are now paying for health benefits, that they don't have to contribute that same amount of money that you, that they've been used to. And they're going to get, forget municipal governments, profitable businesses all of a sudden are going to have a windfall of profit. And I just don't think that that's.
Well, I, I, I agree with you that it's really important to factor in the time value of money. But in a municipality of annual budgets, what you're saying is that this, if I understand correctly, this is basically going to be costing us about a half a million dollars more a year?
Yeah.
And we won't see any savings because of that for another 25 or 30 years?
We won't get that savings, no.
Where, where will the savings come from?
Well, no, 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 we're, we're, you're, you're, you're completely discounting those two zeros in the front. You know, so, so those are, those are benefits that, that the taxpayers getting right up front.
These are the two years, that, that were the first two years that we were contracted?
Correct. Correct.
False.
So. Look, I, I understand completely, but here's the, here's, here's the reality of it. If you don't do something about this, and I'm right, let's put the, and I'm right, and we're going to have to continue to pay no matter what, what the process is. People who own property here today or worse yet, are children who are going to buy property here and now this year, next year, and live here for 25 years. If we don't do something about this, they won't be able to retire here. They might not even be able to stay here for 25 years by the time the health benefits continue to, to soar. And, and, and with this, at least we've taken off the table a credibly large amount of money that we're, we have a good shot of not having to pay in, in the future. This is, this is completely, this is philosophical. But it, but it also is a matter of whether, whether you're thinking about a year or 18 months from now or whether you're thinking about 25 years from now. And we're thinking about 25 years from now.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, what was the savings in the two zeros?
Well, I mean, if, 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 if you look at the, the same thing, you're talking about $300,000 a year? If it were the same percentages?
So we already saved $600,000.
Looking at that way.
Well, wait a minute, but, but you just, I thought you just said that the, the settlement's going to cost us $150,000 to $200,000 a year in extra costs, right?
The question was asked, no, I just said, you're discounting the, the fact that we have the saving in the two years. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Factor that in.
Right. We're not saving $600,000 by having two zeros. We're, we're only going to be saving about half of that over those two-year period. Given what you've said is the calculation here.
You're, you're, we're saying the same thing, we're different. The question I was, the question I was asked is what happened in the first two years? And what was the savings? And I, what I said was, I said, if you, if you had the three percent across five years, you'd be saving three percent in each year. That's about $300,000. So that would be $600,000. That was the question, based on the question I've asked. You're, you're, you're posing a completely different question. And I understand that. So, you know, that's makes it a little bit more difficult because not everybody's speaking the same language here.
Okay, so, so because, because we're talking about the first two years are zeros and we are, we are saving the money from that. But is what you're saying in those two zero years, we're not incurring the cost? We're not going backwards and incurring these additional costs, are we?
No, we're not, but we certainly could been. An arbitrator, an arbitrator certainly could have given us, we haven't even talked about that, if we didn't settle this, where this might have gone with an arbitrator. we haven't even talked about that, if we didn't settle this, where this might have gone with an arbitrator. Arbitrator could have gone back and started at the beginning, could have front-loaded this and likely would have. And, and I don't want to get into a night why, but like, an arbitrator likely would have front-loaded, uh, a settlement, this settlement. And, and so we would have been paying a higher amount in the beginning, lower amount at the end. So that we would, over, over the period of five years, we, we would have been paying a lot more than what we have right now. But having said that, you know, that's all skeptic, I mean, all, you know, uh, projection based on professional opinions. This is a hard agreement. Um, it's an agreement that represents what, what the administration believes is the best agreement that we could get and achieve a major goal of eliminating health benefits for new hires in retirement.
Bigger, bigger issue with the arbitrator would have been that they would not have agreed to take away the health benefits because they don't do that. So if they went to arbitration, we would never have gotten the health benefits.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not prepared to say that's a definite, but that certainly is a risk.
Well, they've never, I, I can tell you that, you know, they've never taken away health benefits in arbitration, ever.
You know, I, you know, I, again, I, it's not, I'm not going to argue, uh, o- over, over what could or couldn't happen. It's just that, you know, we, and we have other contracts to negotiate. So I really don't want to get too deep into those, uh, types of discussions. But, um, clear, clearly, we believe that this represents the best, and, and, and therefore so does the union because you know how hard fought this was. Um, and so the union believes this is the best that they could do. And that usually means it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Uh, it, it just sounds like from, from what you're saying is that just the, the salary increases aside, all of the others, these, all the, all these other increases, we're, we're going to be paying six million dollars in additional property taxes over the next twenty-five or thirty years for the, uh, for the potential to not have an even, a much bigger unfunded liability at the end of that rainbow.
In, in, in today's dollars?
Today's dollars.
Today's dollars, you'll save seven million in the first year. That, that, that you're, you know, wh- when you have, when you have it completely turned over, you're going to save seven million dollars in the first year. So, I mean, yes, you have to wait for the savings. You have to vet the savings. It's kind of like buying a house over thirty-year period. And at the end, you owned your house. So this is, this is, this is an investment in the future. And, and, and we think it's well worth the investment.
And, and what are the, what are the multipliers are, are you using to get to that number? What's your, what's your estimate of, uh, of, uh, inflation and, and the?
I'm talking about today's dollars, at least seven million dollars. Right now, we're spending seven million dollars a year, more than that probably, more, closer to eight, on retire, on retiree benefits.
Right, but it's, but it's not going away.
Right now, but in, but in twenty-five years, it's going to start going away.
Right.
And we're going to invest, and using your math, we're going to invest six million dollars over that twenty-five-year period for a return. And that return is going to be seven million dollars in the first year. I mean, that's a pretty good return. You can do that with your house.
Um, just one more question. My, my other concern in all of this is that it's going to be difficult to, it's going to be more difficult to attract top-notch candidates to our police force if we're not offering retirement healthcare benefits for police.
I don't, yes, South Orange, if they think that their police off, their police officers are, are, um, not up to standard because they don't offer health benefits in retirement. Ask Montclair if they think their police department, uh, represents inferior police officers. Uh, ask, uh, Maplewood if that, if they think that's the case. I think they're going to tell you that they think they've got one of the best police departments in, in the county, as we all believe we do.
And we just hi, and we just hired twelve new cadets.
Yeah. So, so I can tell you, and, and this has been an argument that we've heard and, 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 and I'm not going to, I, I, I'm not going to be disparaging about it, but the truth is, I've managed in towns that do both and there's nothing, there's nothing different in terms of the quality of the people that we're attracting, uh, to come to those communities. And, and, um, you know, when a kid wants to be a cop, he wants to be a cop. He doesn't walk in the door saying, but what are my retirement benefits going to be? That's not what happens. They come in and they're a police officer and they, they get accumulated into the culture of that, of that department. And I, I, I just don't think that that's a real issue.
I appreciate that. I, I do. Uh, but we don't have to argue that tonight. So thank you very much for your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Chu Brown?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilman Kocorvijak, for, um, your diligence. And having just read agreement this afternoon, since you didn't receive it earlier, I, I, I will say this is challenging for me because I do have a full-time job and having received this at noon today, um, you know, it, it was tough to get through after work and, and try to do as much research as I could on my own to make a fair decision. I, I want to, um, first clarify that Maplewood and the towns that you mentioned, Mr. Gross, don't offer the retiree health benefits plan because their officers do have the benefit of chapter three thirty because they are in the state health benefit plan. So the township is not, um, burdened, the taxpayers are not burdened with the healthcare costs that we are. And I understand after having had our, um, discussion, our Zoom meeting with Mike, Michael from, um, Fairview that, um, our expense for our retiree benefits right now are the result of what, um, legislation was prior to the chapter seventy-eight change in the legis, in the law. And, um, at the time, we were self-insured. We were not in the plan and we were paying a hundred percent as was required by law. Chapter seventy-eight changed that to, um, ensure that the, uh, police, and not just the police, but all public employees contributed a percentage according to the salaries and incomes that they earned. So yes, Maplewood does not offer it, but their officers do have, um, retiree benefits, health retiree benefits through chapter three thirty, as does Montclair, as does South Orange. Um, I, I do want to preface, um, my thoughts, um, by saying that I, I, I have been a staunch supporter of the police department of all of our labor unions in obtaining a fair contract. I've been vocal about it. I have, and, and the person that disagrees with you the most, I think, on this council or perhaps not, um, but certainly have expressed it the most on this council that, you know, forfeiting retiree health benefits, um, in my opinion, i- is not a savings for the township when we are looking at absorbing one hundred percent of the cost of those who are currently employed. So they don't have to pay or contribute towards their health insurance benefits. What is that cost in addition to the six million that you just said in the next five years? We have currently five hundred and ninety-seven employees. How many of those five hundred and ninety-seven are eligible to receive one hundred percent paid by the taxpayer retiree benefits without contributions from the employees?
Well, let me go back and answer, answer your question in reference to this contract before we expand it to all, all employees and all of the retirees. In reference to this contract, uh, you're, you're talking, again, it's the same number coincidentally, but it's between thirty-three and forty-four thousand dollars a year.
Okay. I, I, I know what, what I, I took, I took notes when you were talking to, to, responding to Councilman Kocorvijak's, um, question. So, um, the six million dollars over the next five years or the total, right, is what we're spending in today's dollars is what you said about short of seven.
You're, you're, the six million dollars that Mr. Kocovjak was talking about was over the twenty-five to thirty-year period.
Over the twenty-five to thirty-year period. And, and in that time, in the twenty-five to thirty-year period, in addition to the, to that six million, we're also going to, to be paying one hundred percent retiree health benefits for the employees that are hired now, that are here now.
That's included in that figure.
That's included in the six million that you, you quoted. I, but this was just talking about the contract that is before us now.
What, Mr.?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear Councilman Kocorvijak ask about the retiree health benefits.
Mr. Kocovjak, what Mr. Kocovjak, I, I'm going to not want to speak for him, but my interpretation of what he was looking at and the math that he put together on that, it was, we, we, we had come up with a figure of about six million dollars over, over the, the next twenty-five to thirty years, uh, that would, would pay for the additional ten percent of new hires and the employee contribution for existing employees.
I, I did not hear you specify that in that, in the explanation to Mr., to Councilman Kocorvijak.
I would say he and I probably had a mutual understanding on that.
Okay. So then to be clear, what you're saying is that six million dollars of, is what we're paying or, or to use, um, Councilman Kocorvijak's term, purchased, um, for the forfeiture of the healthcare retiree benefits. That's what, that's what we're paying.
Yes.
To include the one hundred percent retiree health benefits for those who are here now.
Yes.
Let, let me, let me, let me just go back and, and ask then, um, with respect to the nine percent increase, the split that is, um, one point five percent January of twenty-twenty, July twenty-twenty, another one point five percent. When, when has the administration settled a contract with this, with, with our unions at a three percent increase? Or a six percent increase or a nine percent increase?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
When, ha- has the administration settled a collective bargaining agreement at three percent increases?
We've, we've, we've
Years ago.
Yeah, years ago, there were eights, tens and twelves.
That was twenty years ago.
Yeah, no, but, but, but since I've been in West Orange, uh, we have averaged two percent or less, you know, this particular contract is nine percent over, uh, five years. So that's less than two percent a year.
It's three percent.
No, zero, zero, three, three and three.
Zero, zero. So you're, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm reading what you have here.
Of course, you have, you have
Nine percent over the next year. Obviously, the two zeros at eighteen and nineteen, I, I can read that.
Right.
For Jan, for the, for the twenty, twenty-twenty year, it's one point five and one point five.
Yeah, it's a, it's a five-year
Now, it is a split. I can read that. I am saying that total though, that is a three percent for that year, three percent for two twenty-one and three percent for two twenty-two.
Right. Zero for seventeen, zero for
I'm sorry, Mr. Sayers, I can't hear, um, wait, wait.
You have to divide nine by four.
I know what I have to do. I would like to ask my question to Mr. Gross without being distracted by your side comments.
While listening to what he's saying to you.
But I am trying to listen to what he's saying.
Okay, let's all be patient. Okay, Councilwoman and, and Mr. Sayers, everybody be patient.
Do not interrupt and distract me while I'm asking your question.
Mr., all right, Mr. Sayers, okay, go ahead, ask, direct your questions to Mr. Gross.
I, I did. Um, and my question was just that I wanted to know what was the increase typically given in collective bargaining agreements? And your answer was two percent or less.
On average, over the life of a contract.
Yes, on average, over the life of the contract.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me how many of the, um, current, um, employees are eligible for the one hundred percent retiree paid benefits?
We have, uh, approximately three hundred, um, little bit less, two, two hundred and ninety full-time employees, um, that have, you know, the, that are eligible for health benefits in retirement. As of this con, now with this contract, two hundred and fifty out of the three hundred are eligible. Now, of the, of that two hundred and fifty, again, this is off the top of my head, at least half of them are statutorily eligible and, and, and probably the other half are based on negotiations.
So, so that half that are statutorily required, were they in contract when chapter seventy-eight changed? Is that how they're statutorily required?
No, had, had to do with when you, how, when you were hired or when you went into the pension program. If you were in the, if, it, it, it's, it's a, it's a formula, but the bottom line to it is if you were, if, if you had, if you had twenty years in, uh, as of May twenty-seventh two thousand and eleven, then you were, you were qualified to get it statutorily. So it's based on, when the change was made, it was how many years of service did you have?
Okay, all right.
If you were hired, a little bit simpler, if you were hired in, um, nineteen ninety-one or after, then you had to, you had to contribute. If you were hired before that, then you didn't have to contribute.
That certainly is a much easier way to understand. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and, and with respect to the new hires in this, um, four fifty-seven B, um, retirement plan, that's, that's the one that we're talking about, correct?
Say that again?
It's four fifty-seven B. That's the, the retirement plan that we're
Four fifty-seven, a four fifty-seven plan is a governmental equivalent of a, of a 401K. It's, it's just a vehicle. It's a, it's a tax-deferred vehicle that allows, uh, employees to in, invest their pay, be pre, in pre, pre-tax dollars, uh, in, into an investment vehicle. That's all it is.
Is there, is there a cap on contributions with the four fifty-seven?
Yes.
What's that cap on contributions?
Um, it changes every year. Uh, it's about nine, I think it's nineteen-five this year. Uh, and to, after, once you get to age fifty, then it doubles. You mean, for three years, you can, you can do double. And then for the rest of the time, you can do, in your fifties, you can do an extra six thousand. So let's say in today's dollars, it's like, maybe it's sixty-five hundred. So it's like twenty-six thousand dollars if, after you're fifty, uh, and then thirty-nine thousand, uh, for three of those years. So, but, but the, for the vast majority of the time, it's based, this year's nineteen-five. It's been going up about five hundred dollars a year though.
All right. And when, when are, um, employees vested?
It's their money.
So they're vested right away. And the employer contributions, well, since this is all employer contribution, do I understand that correct?
Yes. I mean, it, it, basically it shows up as a, as an income for them and it comes out of their paycheck. But obviously it's employer contributed.
So I, yes, employer contributed, it comes out of their pay. But we are doing the ten point five percent according to this contract?
Yes.
Per employee?
Yes.
Per year.
New employees.
Yes.
Yes.
Per year.
Yes.
And, and there, they, this would be in essence, um, an opportunity for them to pay for their own healthcare benefits, should they decide to do so? That's what, it could be for.
Yep.
Okay. And, um, the, what, one of the paragraphs that are listed in this, in this memorandum of understanding is that the aforementioned contributions as pensionable income. So how, how does this, so explain it to me so that I can understand. So ten percent, ten point five percent of each new hire's salary, I want to be clear, new hire's salary, the township is going to pay and it's going to be pensionable income. So in addition to their salary, ten point five percent of what we pay is also going to be pensionable. 10.5% of what we pay is also going to be pensionable.
That's correct. By the way, by the way, that's, that's not really a gift. That has to be that way. You're, the na- the nature of this, of, of, of putting money into a 457 plan means it has to be uh, it has to be received as, as income, and income by definition becomes pensionable. So it, it's, I mean, so, so it, it the wording, I think, is awkward because the reality of the situation is basically they have a higher salary.
Yes, and, and to my point, which means our taxpayers are just, um, you know, are going to be, are, are going to be responsible for that higher salary. Um, and then also, when I was, in, in the brief moment that I had to do some research on employer contributions to um 457s or 401K, I haven't found any employer contribution that is above 6%. Why are we at 10.5%? And I understand that they are prof-, are, are organizations, companies that are for profit and obviously invest in their employees to turn a profit, but as a municipality, that, that's not the business that we're in. 10.5% it is, is is higher than what most pay. What, why 10.5%?
Because that was the best we could negotiate. As, as you mench- have mentioned, and, 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 and doing this is, is a response to, frankly, some of your concerns that you've expressed was, was the, the actions that we had taken previously uh that we would be leaving uh employees without um any coverage in retirement. And we looked at it and said, this was a way that we could bridge that concern that you raised a- as, as well as um obviously bring the contract together uh and, and get it approved by the, the, the police, the police officers. And yes, you know, it's 10 and a half because that's what we negotiated, because that was the best that we can negotiate. Um, you can't really, this is not a pension, this is not a profit-sharing vehicle, 457 plan, that's not a, that is not what a 457 plan is. It is not really what a 401K plan is. A 401K, a 401K is a vehicle and the plan, you know, how it contributes is their retirement program. What this is, 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 is something quite different, is, is that we listened to the concerns that, that they had, and then that, and frankly, that you had um and came up with a way um which we think is, is workable and advantageous um to the employee and advantageous to the township taxpayer in the long run. You know, it, it's, again, it, it's an investment in the future, just like somebody's house is. You know, somebody buys a house and they pay their mortgage for 30 years to get it, to be, to, to come to the end and be, and, and be able to get uh the benefit of it. And that's what this is.
So I, I, I absolutely did raise those concerns, just as uh Councilman Kropovak raised the concerns about not providing healthcare retiree benefits. The fear of not attracting, particularly when we're trying to diversify our police department um the right candidates um to stay um and, and show the same commitment that our current police officers have. So absolutely, I shared that concern, absolutely advocated for it, but I, I have to also a- 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 as a council member, also advocate for the taxpayers. This to me is a contract that was timely settled, 9% in, 9% increase in five years, a 10.5% contribution towards retiree salaries and 100% paid medical retiree benefits. Honestly, when I was reading this, I was looking to see where the kitchen sink was because I, I, my hat off, as a councilperson, to uh Michael Cassidy and to Lawrence Dominguez for um fighting for their members. I think that if their members understood um just how beneficial this contract is to them, they would certainly appreciate them that much more for all of the work that they have put in for their negotiation skills in this place um and still support them. However, this is not beneficial to our, to, to our townships. Waiting for 30 years to save any tax dollars to me is not a fair resolution
No.
of, I'm sorry, is not, is not a fair resolution to, to the quagmire that we were in. And, and, and lastly, I'm gonna end with um just addressing something um my council colleague mentioned about how you know, the state plan and going into the state plan and not having a, an analysis done. I did, I had an analysis done, I had a Zoom meeting with Mr. Gross and Fairview Insurance um Company, and Fairview Insurance even said, and, and I have my notes verbatim, $2 million or savings right away because of the prescription plan. Because of the prescription plan.
Which, which we've never, we've never refuted.
No.
There is, if we could, if we could have gotten all five, all of our unions to agree.
And, and I, I appreciate that you, that, that the administration always goes back to that. You have three unions, including the Fire Department Union, willing to negotiate that. Two unions that didn't have retiree health benefits that you gave them back to, so then you could say that you had six unions who were all signed up for this. I, I'm not going to continue to belabor the point that I, I don't agree with the language in this resolution that says you know, parties have acted in good faith. I absolutely don't agree with that. I, I don't agree that this is the best deal for our residents. While I support the Police Department and all of our labor unions, they did a heck of a job with this and um quite timely for the administration to want to settle this at this point. I, I, I am incredibly saddened for our residents. Should this MOU be approved tonight? That's all for me.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? We're all here.
Oh, okay.
Are you done, are you done, Councilwoman?
Yes, I said that was it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Uh, listening to my colleagues, I hear what they're saying about uh taxpayers. This has been so long in coming. Even during the pandemic, one of the officers, the union officers retiring. I I'm pleased to see in this agreement that um I was also concerned about the new hires, and you're right, the words that were used before about how new hires don't think about that future, so I was concerned about that. I'm pleased to see the 457 deferred compensation plan in there because there could be money put aside for them to decide what to do when it's needed. We're holding a signed contract. They agreed to this, the administration agreed to this, we can argue the numbers, we can talk about savings. This was so long in the making, I want, I want to commend, I also want to commend the council president because you were helping to facilitate this, to move this logjam forward during these, for these negotiations to receive an agreement. And the contract is signed. Um, I want to thank our police department for continuing to work through to these negotiations and continue uh to make us be proud of them. So, it's a signed contract, and thank you.
Okay, thank, you done, Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go, let's quickly, um, state health benefit plans.
Why? But tell me why.
I, I'm gonna go there for one minute because.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
But then I got, but then I'd like to say something too about state health.
I, I didn't get to speak at all, guys, so.
No, I know.
So I'm, I'm just, here's where I'm gonna go with the state health benefit package. How to be negotiated by the unions. Talked, talked through these past few years, talked to a lot of firemen, a lot of policemen. It seemed that they, the older, or older um first responders um wanted to stay with the plan that they had, and, and our, our, our younger first responders um you know, wanted the lower premium, and that seemed to be the, the struggle that these unions had. Our own, um, our own um Board of Education never settled to a state plan, they have their own private plan. Uh, when I was uh doing salary comparisons with other towns, when we were talking budget talks on other positions, I asked numerous questions that I sent to all of you and many municipalities around us didn't settle for state health benefit plans, okay? Yes, it's a great tax savings for us as the township side and for our taxpayers, the residents, which uh is me, I'm a taxpayer, all of you are a taxpayer, and the, and it wasn't negotiated. So to keep having this conversation and confusing the public, it had to be negotiated, and it wasn't.
I'm sorry, I did not confuse the public, I was being truthful.
Okay, well, it still wasn't negotiated, Councilwoman, so that's a story. Also, hearing through the past three years, talking to our first responders for the past couple contracts, they were, they benefit the town, they took it on the chin uh with some uh stressful times, and we continue to have stressful, stressful times, and they were taking zeros for a while. Um, they took zeros, you have to, you have to factor in the whole package. So, you know, for the first two years, I mean, we're, we're frustrated here, looking forward, they're also frustrated. Again, not everybody's happy in negotiation because they had zeros the past two years. So they're not happy about that either. They're not happy that they had to take zeros the past two years, and this wasn't negotiated sooner. Again, not everybody's happy within, uh, with a negotiation, therefore, you, you know, it's, it's fair. 457 plan where I, I agree, Councilwoman, too, Brown, it would be nice if the uh compensation or the, it, it was lower, but you and I weren't in the room. We don't do the negotiations. So um there's a lot of factors here, there's been a lot of angst over this. Healthcare has been rising rapidly. And yes, we have to be responsible and look towards the future. This is why this was a long, drawn-out negotiation. And if we're looking why this was so timely, we have to look at the calendar for arbitration. So when we use the words convenient, we have to look that there was things in arbitration, coming to arbitration. And um we would have lost some things, and the union leadership would have lost things as well. And again, um, you know, it didn't go there. So you have your choice, you either want to, you know, pass this this evening, or you don't. Mr. Gross, I do want you to send my colleagues that um chart of what you presented at the budget hearing, so they could look at this and see the, the rise. But again, you gotta look at the whole package, and they took zeros for two years. And that has to weigh into the, to the package number.
Council.
Any, uh, Mr. Sayers, I'm gonna let you speak again because you weren't heavily involved in this, I know you're getting frustrated, so if you make a few points.
First of all, please excuse me for acting the way I acted. I was totally out of line, speaking loud, and I'm very sorry for that. Please forgive me for that. Um, I beg you for your forgiveness. But the most important thing here is, right now, is that if we don't approve this contract, they're going to arbitration, and if they go to arbitration, they're gonna get more money in the contract than than what you're talking about right now. That's the bottom line. The bottom line is, if we don't approve this contract, they have an arbitration hearing. John, what, what is it set for, uh, next week?
Uh, mid, mid, it's mid, mid-month. It's kind of, probably the 15th, but I think.
So if we don't approve this contract, they're going to arbitration, and they're gonna get more money than we're talking about right now. There's no doubt about that, and there's nothing you're gonna be able to do about that if the arbitrator rules in their favor, which I'm telling you, that's gonna happen. So make your decision based on whatever you want to make your decision on, but our position is, is that this is the best position we can take with these two unions right now. That's all I have.
Council, Council President?
Um, go, go ahead, Councilman.
Real quick, I just wanted with the understanding from, from Public Law, 1997, Chapter 330. Chapter 330 only applies to eligible uniformed services, police and fire employees of 25 years of service or permanent disability discharge. It does not provide retiree coverage for non-uniform or for those who leave prior to 25 years. Eligible uniformed employees do not have to be covered under New Jersey SHBP, State Health Benefit Prior to Retirement in order to be eligible for Chapter 330. Has followed this text from Fact Sheet 47, taken from New Jersey State Health Benefits Regarding 330. Some employers will pay for health benefit coverage for their retired employees. For those who do not, Public Law, 1997, Chapter 330, Chapter 330 provides eligibility for enrollment in the state health benefit program to certain retired local police officers and firefighters with part of the cost paid by the state. To qualify Chapter 330, you must have retired with 25 or more years of pension service credit or on a disability retirement from an employer who does not provide any payment towards retiree health coverage or reimbursement of medical part B premiums. We do. You need not be covered by state health benefits while employed to qualify for enrollment. Health benefit retiree coverage under Chapter 330, information for police and fire retirement systems, yada, yada, yada. Here's the last part, this is the most important part. If the township switches to New Jersey HSB, it is still obligated to pay retirees from the health benefits from which they are eligible under the contract that existed when they retired, but they don't switch to the state health plan. Those costs will not change. New Jersey State Health Benefit Plans may also permit local employers, municipalities to add coverage for retirees who may not be eligible for coverage. Local employees are not eligible for dental or vision plans through New Jersey State Health Benefits, only state employees are covered. New Jersey State Health Benefit is now only providing coverage under Horizon's Blue Cross Blue Shield. This year, BCBS reduced the payment scale for out-of-network providers, so the patient pays more. And this year, the premium's going up 2.8%. So I just want to say that, I'm not being disrespectful, I'm not challenging anybody, but that's public law. That applies to retirees. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Miss, Mr. Gross, I don't know if you just want to comment on that with, with the councilman just read, or you, you're in grants?
I, look, it, it, what, what Councilman read is accurate, that's what, that's, that's what the, the, the program is. And, and we could talk a lot about Chapter 330, but at the end of the day, there, there's at least a dispute or some ambiguity about whether we qualify or whether we don't. We've, again, we listed to some of the concerns um that are, that were, that were put out there. Obviously, we've negotiated in good faith with the union, and what you have before you represents what we believe uh will protect the interest of the employees, uh, the township, and the taxpayers.
Does anybody have any more questions for the administration? Okay.
Council President, I know you can't see me, but.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on something that uh Councilwoman McCartney said uh a little while ago, and I don't have the exact notes, but she seemed to be giving you, Council President, credit for your role in bringing this, this uh settlement forward. And I wasn't aware of that role, and I was just curious as to what exactly she was talking about.
Well, I, I think Councilwoman is just um being very kind, but I've been encouraging, you know, both the mayor and, and our membership to, to, you know, communicate. So there isn't anything I was a part of, other than expressing to each side the importance of moving this forward. And I'm glad they did, they sat, and, and this has been ongoing, Mr. Sayers could tell you, Mr. Gross could tell you, they, you know, they met for hours on end. So, and I, I appreciate all their efforts and trying to, you know, move, move this forward. I don't think both parties wanted to go to arbitration. And this is what they settled on. Their, their membership voted last night and they asked for this to be put on the agenda today. So it's as simple as that. Nothing more to it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, before we, any more questions for the administration? Okay, I have a statement from the PBA and the SOA that I like to read. On behalf of the West Orange PBA Local 25 and West Orange SOA, we'd like to thank everyone who stood behind us over the past several years. Tonight allows us to put these difficult negotiations behind us. Police officers and their families will know that when they leave that door, that their families will be taken care of as they leave to face the unknown. We can now all go back to doing what we do best, providing the best police services to the greatest community. We would further like to thank the community for all their support over the last several months during these unprecedented times. The countless residents who send food, PPE, sanitizers, and most of all, the simple words, "thank you." The mayor had also asked me to read a statement tonight. Dear Council President and Council Members, the administration is pleased to present these attached, approved and signed memorandum of agreements for both police union contracts to the Township Council for consideration. Negotiating unit, union agreements is not an easy process and lengthy negotiations are an unfortunate result of both sides working to achieve the best results. Though no agreement would ever be viewed as the best result, these agreements come close as both sides met some of the goals they had set when the process started. The township has built in long-term savings for the taxpayers while the membership secured important benefits for their families and fair pay increases in the coming years. I would like to thank Lieutenant Michael Cassidy, President of SOA Union, and Police Officer Larry Dominguez, President of the PBA Union, for their commitment to the process and for their willingness to work creatively to meet our mutual objectives. And it added important thanks to the men and women of our police department for continuing to work hard in carrying out the responsibilities and for always being a source of pride to our community. Sincerely, Robert D. Parisi, Mayor. So with that, Madam Clerk, I will ask you to, or one of my colleagues, to make a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement.
I make a motion to approve, Council President.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
How?
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the administration for many, many hours of due diligence. And we look forward to a better relationship between our administration and our departments. With that, Madam Clerk, we have one more ordinance on first reading. If you could read it into the record.
Sure. 2619-20, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 25 Land Use Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange to Implement a Settlement Agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay. This is on first reading. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask the administration? While we do due diligence, as we move forward to second reading, Councilman Kukoviac, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, this is going to be my best and shortest question. I just would like to get an electronic version of the redlined version of this so that I can review it. I don't know who to ask to do that.
I can do that, I believe.
Great, thank you.
I think I have it. Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all right, anyone else? Okay, very good. It is approaching midnight, a few minutes away from midnight. I'm going to ask my colleagues, unless it's absolutely urgent. I don't, I know I'm too tired to have any pending matter discussions. If there's anything urgent, I like to move any discussions for the next council meeting. Any objections to that? Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, just, just very quickly. I, I thought it was a good idea. I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I thought it was a good idea, maybe we put together a, a committee to, to, to take a look at this. Does, has anybody decided on whether they think that's a good idea or not, or should we just push it to the next meeting? I don't want to discuss.
Look at what?
Creating a committee on the council to look at these two issues, the trees and the Crestmont Country Club issue.
I think it follows a public process. It goes before the planning board or zoning board, wherever it's going to end up. And you are the liaison to the Open Space Commission, who is already involved in those discussions. I don't think it's necessary. Because people are going away in anyway. So we're going to hear from everyone and, and, and take all of that into consideration.
Yeah, let's, let's see where this is going to go. What comes back within the next two weeks, hopefully, hopefully. Mainly the Crestmont Country Club. As far as the, the tree ordinance goes, I think it's going to go before the planning board tomorrow night. And again, you know, you're, you're open space environmental, who's environmental? Councilwoman McCartney?
Who's on open space.
Yeah, so.
Well, respectfully, that, that does not address the issue that I raised, but I, I really don't want to talk about it tonight. We'll.
Yeah, and I apologize because like I said, I'm, my brain's, I'm done for the evening, so I don't have any of the comments. Councilwoman Matute Brown, did you have your hand up?
I just, for the benefit of the discussion that the administration is going to have over the vigilant systems contracts, just a couple of things that I wanted to share that were of concern to me with respect to contracting them. There is something to be said about infringement of our privacy over profits for a company. I know that law enforcement agencies use these to nationwide to track and there is, I, I think during public comment, Monica Prokowsky pointed out that they do use facial recognition. That, that has always been a concern to me and I wanted to, to reiterate that because Chief Abbott did say when we talked about the Ring Memorandum of Understanding that should they begin to use facial recognition, he would no longer want to be associated with that contract. I also wanted to express to the council that when we look at social justice policies in municipal governance, this is one of those. Things like, like surveillance and overpolicing does impact those communities that are already marginalized. ICE particularly has targeted undocumented residents for deportation that is beyond criminal offenses. They have contracted with vigilance, which gives them complete access to targeting neighbors, families and friends. That is a concern to me, particularly since we have taken a position along with the Attorney General's Office that we, you know, are not going to assist ICE agencies in that regard. And then lastly, I just wanted to read something from the Internal Association of Chief of Polices that in reference to surveillance noted that individuals may become more cautious in the exercise of their protected rights of expression, protest, association and political participation due to license plate readers. It continues, "Recording driving habits could implicate First Amendment concerns, specifically license plate reader systems that have the ability to record vehicles' attendance at locations or events that although lawful and public may be considered private." I, I think that this is something that we should consider. The ACLU has come out against this, you know. It's something that I just wanted to put out on the record for you to consider and for the administration to consider when they're looking over this contract.
Very good. Thank you. Those were good comments. Councilman Kukoviac?
Just, just very briefly, I, I, you know, you know that I share Councilwoman's concerns going back a long ways and, and I think they're important to raise. I read the contracts twice and maybe I missed it. But there is no facial recognition mentioned there. What we've got is, is access to a database of license plate reader data. And just, just to remind everyone, we've had license plate readers in this town for multiple years. And again, without any sort of restrictions on that and any sort of controversy. You know, if somebody's driving a car on a, a public road, they are subject to a license plate reader. And the other thing is that the, the, the other portion of the contract is for essentially mugshots that have been commercial, access to a database of mugshots. And there's no facial recognition talked about at all in the, in the contract. But we can, we can talk about it at the next council meeting, obviously.
Councilman, that, that is 100% our understanding of what we're buying. And, and, and what I, what I read in there is some advertise, what looks like to me is some self-advertising of the company of some of their capabilities, but not necessarily, not necessarily having to do with what the use of this, this particular unit is, is about. So we're going to, such a sensitive issue. And, and, and I think we're all in, what I like to say, we're all in violent agreement here. And, and so we're just going, reason we pulled it is we just want to pull it back, do our due diligence one more time and make sure there's not something hidden in there that, that we missed. And then bring it back to you because we, we're all on the same page, I believe.
And Mr. Gross and Mr. Sayers, you know, maybe have the chief present when you're ready to present this to us again because I like to wrap my head around, you know, why, you know, why you want to purchase this too. And my other, Councilwoman McCartney or Councilman Guarino, any other comments?
No, thank you.
All right, everybody good? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
And next virtual meeting is Tuesday, October 20th at 6:30 PM. So instructions will be posted the Friday before the meeting. So thank you, everyone. Anyone who's still out there, thank you in cyberspace there. Thank you for hanging in there. It was a very long, formative meeting and we'll see you in two weeks.
Hey, thank you.
West Orange.
This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off camera and no other business will be conducted. Have a great morning.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome.